Good morning, everyone. It is 10:01, and I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. And we will start with a salute to the flag. Manager Brown, can you please lead us in a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, if you'll help us with our roll call.
Of course.
Thank you.
Chair Hill.
Here.
Vice Chair Herman.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Present.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Andreola.
Present.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Deputy District Attorney Mary Canderas.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galassini, your canon clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into public comment. Manager Brown.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that will be made to the commission as a whole, virtual public comment, may be taken when facilities are available. A speaker's viewpoint will not be restricted, however, reasonable restrictions may be imposed upon the time, place, and manner of speech. Irrelevant statements, unduly repetitious statements, and personal attacks that would objectively antagonize or incite others are examples of speech that may be reasonably limited. The Board of County Commissioners carries out the business of Washoe County and its residents during its meetings. The presiding officer may order a person be removed if the person's conduct or statements disrupt the order or safety of the meeting. Warnings about disruptive conduct or comments may or may not be given prior to removal. Furthermore, certain disruptions of a public meeting are criminal acts as defined under NRS 203.090 and/or NRS 203.119, which may result in prosecution in appropriate cases.
Thank you very much. And Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Linda Vogedis, followed by Judy Primack.
Morning. I'd like to just give a little background about myself here. So in 1973, my family moved to Reno. I don't know if I can do this.
You can pause the timer.
We had moved all over the country.
You can start it.
We made Reno our home. We love this area. We've been involved in the Reno area for the last fifty-some-odd years. My brother and I graduated from the University of Nevada. We both have had our families grow up here. Our children have all graduated from the University of Nevada. We have businesses here. My husband and I purchased our land to build our home, to raise our kids. We wanted a rural lifestyle. And now it's in question whether or not we can keep it. We raise horses. I worked for the university for thirty years. Actually ran the Equestrian Center. I had kids come to my home to experience baby horses being born. We watched meteor showers under the, you know, under the skies. We've shared it with lots of kids in the schools with my kids. They would come out because we had this rural lifestyle. And I just want to ask you to please consider the master plan values that recognize these rural areas and how important it is that we maintain these areas as rural for the future generations to come out and learn and grow and know what wildlife and agriculture is. I have golden eagles and bald eagles that land in my yard.
Thank you. Thank you. Judy Primack, or Jody Primack, followed by Maureen McElroy.
I'm not good at public speaking either. I work for the Karma Box Project, but I'm here today as a private citizen. The issue about the homeless. We recently were given certificates that you guys awarded us for our work with the homeless. And I just don't understand how you guys don't think that we should be open 24 hours once, you know, the end of March or April comes when it's not cold out anymore. Most of the people that we have at our facility are elderly, handicapped, even, you know, I've got ones that are complete blind, and I can't expect them to go out into the street at all hours. You know, if you're going to close it down for part of the time, you should be closing it down during the day when it's the safest. Because these people, majorly, are the mentally ill that NAM shut down and kicked to the curb. There are people that need our help. And I'm sorry, but we're showing the wrong message across if we're going to kick them out to the curb when it gets dark out. You know, that's like what is the scariest, as far as I'm concerned. But most of the people there aren't addicts. I mean, that's the way people usually perceive the homeless. Most of these people just have got the wrong circumstances handed to them. And I can't, I mean, I've got ex-perimetics that are in there, you know, because they had the wrong circumstance happen to their lives. I just can't begin to tell you that there's all kinds of extenuating circumstances. And if you're going to kick them out to the curb when they need us most, they're not allowed to go anywhere else in the city. I mean, there's no place that is welcoming or safe. And there's got to be at least one place in the city for them to be able to go. I mean, seriously, there's got to be another way. I work firsthand with them, and I can tell you that, as you can see, it's not just a part, you know, it's just a nine-to-five job, as I was told when I, you know, started the job. I never thought I would do this. And it's brought me here, so this is really outside my comfort zone. But they help a lot of people. And I think you're doing a severe injustice to our city by shutting them down. I know that's the way it went last year, but it just shouldn't, because there's just way too many people.
Thank you. Thank you for your service to Karma Box. And Manager Brown, maybe we can get a presentation on this so the board can discuss the overflow. I'm assuming it's the overflow shelter that she's speaking about. Maureen McElroy, followed by Terri Brooks.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm constituent Maureen McElroy for the record. I want to take a moment to speak up in support of our innovative and invaluable public library system. I have a friend, a senior citizen, who is a lifelong reader. Her main recreation and joy in life has always been reading books. Unfortunately, like many seniors, she's been diagnosed with macular degeneration, which now prevents her from reading her beloved books. But Washoe County Library System has come through. It provides downloadable audiobooks and ebooks through their Libby database. Via her library card and using the Libby app, my friend can still pursue her love of books by listening to any of the thousands of titles available at the click of a button. My friend also has trouble driving from her eye condition, but the downloadable option allows her to access these titles from the comfort of her home. Downloadable audios and ebooks have become extremely popular at our public library. According to the Collection Development Librarian, currently, forty-eight percent of the library's material budget goes to downloadables. But still, the average wait time for these titles is forty-six days. Downloadables are also extremely expensive, much more than hardback books. New titles costing well above that of a print book. They cost about sixty-five to $100 for one title. And that's just for a two-year license fee. During this budgeting season, I urge you to please fund the Washoe County Library System to the fullest extent, allowing them to continue to provide those valuable services to vulnerable people like my good friend with macular degeneration. It's services they depend on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Terri Brooks, followed by Howard Owens.
Good morning. It's me, Terri Brooks, again. And today, I'd like to address following politics to education in the case of homelessness. Some politicians have opposed federal funding for schools, while other politicians have supported federal funding for schools. Some schools are better in rich neighborhoods, while some schools are not so good in poor neighborhoods. Some politicians supported the Head Start Program for the poor to get an education, saying it was a key to get out of poverty by receiving a better education. Some supported the Upward Bound Program to improve education so that students, even the poor, would benefit from education. But some say that it's an individual's intelligence that determines their success in life, and that opportunity has nothing to do with someone's success in life. Others say that opportunity does affect the success in life, and that equality in opportunity does help success in life. Some politicians want to eliminate the effects of privilege, while other politicians say there are no effects of privilege. Some say that personal development leads to good education. So they're opposed to federal involvement when it comes to education. Others say that social inequality leads to deprivation, which then leads to a lack of education. Some have said that the poor don't deserve education, so why should the poor even receive an education? Others have said that the poor do deserve an education, so why should the poor be deprived of education? Some politicians say one thing, some politicians say another. Some politicians, if we would all just come together, we might learn from one another. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back because I've still got more to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Howard Owens, followed by Russ Earl.
Good morning. My name is Howard Owens. I live in Silver Knowles on Placerville. And I want to talk about the lithium battery facility that's going in at Sted Airport. My previous career was at General Motors in Detroit. I worked on lithium batteries. I'm familiar with them. And we all have heard about the Moss Fire in California with lithium ion batteries. They still haven't put that fire out. It's still flaring up because they're very difficult fires to put out. And lithium ion batteries, when the case cracks and moisture gets inside, it catches on fire and it explodes like a stick of dynamite. We had a test facility on the a test facility on the technical grounds where we were doing lithium battery testing, over voltage, under voltage, over current, under current, through a computer-controlled algorithm. And at 11 o'clock at night, it exploded. The whole building, two-story building, leveled flat. Luckily, there wasn't a lot of people in there. Five people were hurt. If it happened during the daytime, it would have been much worse. But when something explodes, it's contained to the area of the explosion. It's not going to go six blocks over unless it's a large explosion, right? Whatever energy is the explosion. What they're proposing for Sted Airport is lithium sulfur batteries. Lithium sulfur batteries, when the battery case cracks, emits a toxic gas, and one whiff will kill you. And so putting that in a highly populated area, in my opinion, is very unsafe because bad things always happen. And there's no way to contain gas in an area once it enters the environment. Wind will blow it, whatever. And you can tell people, close their windows and lock their doors, but it's still going to get into the house. And potentially, thousands of people are at risk. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Russ Earl, followed by Angelo Nowakowska.
Good morning, Russ Earl. I'm a Silver Knowles resident and have been for almost twenty years. I'm going to talk to you later about item number 23, but my item of choice at the moment is item number 24, which is the South Osage WRZA 24-004, I believe. I'm asking that you continue to uphold the Planning Commission and the Planning Department's denial by the applicant to increase density zoning or allow any development down in that area. The county just recently re-released their updated floodplain maps, and almost the entirety of that parcel in question is now within the floodplain. The developer has, his fix to the situation would be to raise the level of his parcel to be a foot above the floodplain. Well, what does that do to all the surrounding and existing homeowners that are there that already, back in 2017, had three- and four-foot sandbag berms around their homes when we had flooding in that area? And it's only going to get worse as we have more development in the area of North Virginia and more warehouses are put in. That runoff then all makes its way down to Silver Lake. And if we allow more development in that area and don't uphold the denial by the Planning Commission and the Planning Department, my concern would be, is the county then liable for allowing that to occur? And would they incur liability and lawsuits by the homeowners that are then affected and flooded out by this potential damage? I don't want to be, I know we don't, we're not flush with funds in this county. I don't want to be a taxpayer where my taxes aren't going to be going for services that are already sparse and paying for lawsuits. The other thing I need to remind everybody is we're a closed hydrologic basin. We can't, the water doesn't flow out naturally from the Silver Knowles area. It has to be pumped, or it has to infuse through the ground into the groundwater table. And that's a very slow process because of the hardpan we have out in our area. So just again, look at the flood, new floodplain maps, Silver Knowles, more of it is in that area now. Homeowners are going to have problems getting flood insurance. And please uphold the Planning Commission and Planning Department's ruling to deny that appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Angelo Nowakowska, sorry.
Good morning, and it's Nowakowska.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank Gene Hartman for letting me know about this meeting. My name is Angelo Nowakowska. I'm an avid bicyclist here in the Reno area. I've been doing my due diligence to repair, rebuild, and maintenance the trails that already exist at the Biggest Little Bike Park for the past year and a half to keep the, to keep the, sorry, to keep the park ridable and safe. I was informed last Saturday bulldozing was going to take place on March 3rd. I found out a meeting was held back in July of 2024 that was not made public to the people associated with Biggest Little Bike Park, along with myself. My concerns are that instead of revamping the existing trails to make them more safe and more user-friendly, their answer is to demo ninety percent of the existing trails, trails that stood strong and safe to ride for twenty-plus years. Twenty years of hard work and dedication to riding bikes. Another concern is there's no budget for maintenance after the leveling or, another concern is there's no budget for maintenance after they leveled the existing trails and have built new ones, which makes no sense considering their permit application says the trails are not legitimized because trails are not maintained. I'd like to understand why, for so many years, money was never, money has never been allocated to maintaining this park, but there's money to bulldoze mine and others' hard work. It's bizarre that the reasoning for demolition is the unsafe crossing of trails, when I myself have never experienced anyone or had a case of someone getting into an accident regarding trail crossing. I do understand with this development, the park is not going away, only changing. So with that, if I cannot stop bulldozing, I'd like to ask if I could be a part of the next iteration of Biggest Little Bike Park to continue to help my community.
Thank you. And we'll have staff connect with you and get an update to the board after they've connected with you so we can see, look into this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fernando Piper, followed by Heidi Howe.
Good morning. I'm here, too, to talk about the Biggest Little Bike Park. So there were meetings that were supposed to be public that were never announced to us or anyone in the bike community. So the people that are taking it over and doing these, this rebuild or this demolition of what they're doing, they don't exactly have the best interest of our community or the trails themselves in mind. And what they're saying they're going to do and what the money that they're saying is allocated, the numbers don't make sense. There's still a big gap. Like, they're saying they're going to build an access road, which is technically there, that just needs to be graded probably once, and rocks need to be moved. And then you'll have full availability for EMT and fire. And then they're talking about making it more accessible or ridable for inexperienced and younger riders. But the lines that they're talking about keeping are two of the biggest lines that we have. And then the demolition and the building of two more lines, like, and the money just doesn't make sense. And our whole topic is, is how do we become part of this since, you know, there's a couple of us that have been building since the very beginning? Like, I have a guy here that was a part of the very first shovels that were landed out there. We became part of Parks and Rec, and from what I understand, right before the pandemic, there was money allocated towards the Biggest Little Bike Park. But then, because of the pandemic, nothing ever fell through. Jim Seaver told me to bring that up today. And no one has ever contacted him through this whole thing, and he's been the main builder since day one out there. The maintenance, the cleaning up trash, everything has fallen off onto pretty much the local riders that have been here since day one. And then the other question is, is they say that, you know, this was talked about between local builders and professional riders and professional builders. I've been building jumps since I was fifteen years old. I've been riding jumps just as long. And everything that they have done, they just come out and try to copy what we've done. And then we've had to go fix what they've done in other places because they haven't gotten it down. Most of these guys aren't actual riders and don't comprehend what they're doing. And our, like, my biggest thing is, is if they come out here and they do do this rebuild, which I kind of have an idea who is going to do it, like, I'm going to have to go back out and fix and or rebuild everything they do to make it safe and ridable later. And I was just curious how we become part of this instead of being pushed to the side and watching our trails be demolished? Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi Howe, followed by Justin Davis.
Good morning. My name is Heidi Howe, long-term resident of Washoe County. And, gosh, I've been Russ's neighbor for twenty years, but I've been living out there for forty on Osage Road. And I want to give a little background. So I grew up in the back of Lemon Valley. And I watched my parents progressively drop their well three times as the water was drawn out from underneath their property as development happened in Lemon Valley. My mother was a real estate agent and sold property in Lemon Valley. She would warn people along Lemon Drive that if they purchased homes there, that they would flood. Then I watched as developers provided fill for the lakeside of Lemon Drive and continued to build homes there, that then in 2017, when we had the giant flood, flooded, which we all knew was going to happen. So now I live over in Silver Knowles on Osage Road. And what I am watching is the same thing happening over again. Now that the air races are no longer at Sted, I've seen the surveyors at my back fence that have intentions of putting large, large warehouses within 300 feet of my back fence, which is going to impact the ability of the land to absorb the moisture when we have massive flood events in the future. So that's occurring. Also, all these homes that are going in there, they're going to draw on the water. I'm on a well. And am I going to end up having to be forced to go on to a water system like my parents were that they had to pay for after fighting for thirty years? So those are the things I'm concerned about. My in-laws purchased the land out on Osage Road in 1974. They bought out there because they wanted that type of a rural lifestyle. They didn't want to have crowding out there. They dealt with dirt roads out there forever. Large portions of Osage Road are still dirt roads. And when we have these floods, when we have these large events, my property still floods because it comes into the ditches. Not everybody in the area keeps them clean like I do. And we end up having to deal with that lack of maintenance as well. So that's why I'm here talking about this, because I'm concerned about my community. I love this area. And on top of everything, now that I'm retired, I'm working for the library because that's what I did in high school and that's what I do now because I love my community. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Justin Davis.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Justin, Nevada-born, Nevada-raised BMX bicycle enthusiast here with concerns about the Biggest Little City Bike Park changes that are being made to, you know, growing up here in Reno, I've had, you know, my firsthand experience as a kid building trails up in the North Valleys that now I go to former parks and their apartment complexes or, you know, just bulldoze down completely flat for no reason. And, you know, all these parks, BMX parks, they start as a firsthand effort from us riders, you know, the individuals that are actually out there. I hear plans that are happening from the BMX park from people I haven't ever seen out there. there, and I go out there every week for the last 10 years, my whole life. And, uh, so, you know, I just wanted to voice my opposition to really involving more people into something that's really more of a communal effort to begin with, that's an established park. And, you know, the people who are actually riding them are the ones building them and doing the maintenance now. You go out to Truckee Bike Park, you can't take a shovel to anything or fix any of their dangerous obstacles they have out there. And so I just wanna keep Sun Valley, Biggest Little City Bike Park as it is. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. With that, uh, if there's no other public comment, we'll take a break until our meeting will start at 11 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, it is 11 o'clock, and I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order, and we'll go to Item 4, Manager Brown.
Item 4 is Commissioners and County Managers announcements, reports, and updates to include Boards and Commissions' updates, requests for information, and topics for future agendas.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything for us?
I do, Madam Chair. I'd just like to update the Board very quickly that the, uh, city managers in Reno and Sparks and the county manager have been meeting, uh, per the direction of the Boards at the concurrent meeting to follow up on next steps for consideration of, uh, fire regionalization. Uh, we will be getting together with the, the Chiefs, uh, later this week. Um, I would say to you, the direction seems to be to, uh, look at bringing in a third party to do a business plan on what a new, what a consolidated, uh, fire agency might look like, what would, what costs to do that, what are the feasibilities and, and pitfalls? Um, so rather than doing a, a study that tells us what we already know, um, let's do, let's take a hard look at financially what, what could be possible or not possible. Um, so, um, I'll keep you all updated as things progress. Again, discussions with the Chiefs later this week in Remza, um, but just wanted to provide that update.
Thank you very much, and, uh, great work, and looking forward to that update. I know that the region is very supportive about how soon we can work together. Uh, Vice Chair Herman. Okay, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everybody. I, um, wanted to ask for an possible agenda item coming up in the future. Um, last fall, I did a ride-along, uh, with the BLM, and, uh, Kimberly Dow, the BLM District Manager, was the one that helped set that ride-along up, and it was super interesting to see all the different urban interface issues that affect all five of our districts. And she was kind enough to provide a list of, uh, potential collaborative opportunities that the county can work with the BLM on illegal dumping in Washoe County. I have the list. I'll forward it to you, uh, Madam Chair and Manager Brown, um, but I would love to see a, a presentation on how we currently handle those issues that face our county, and then, um, maybe for the next legislative session, there is a, a potential idea that we could, uh, put forward if it's of interest to the body. So that's it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Looking forward to that discussion. Commissioner Andriola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I know this isn't an agenda item, but just as a follow-up to the county manager's, um, report on the next steps in the meetings, um, I think it's great about the third-party business plan. Um, the terms, regionalization and consolidation, continue to be intertwined, and maybe I'm hoping that the business plan can actually separate what those costs look like because those are two distinct meanings. So I would just throw that out for possible clarification as the, um, business plan or the independent third party is, um, looked at, that they consider those distinctions in their, um, report. But I do have a few things, Madam Chair, if I may.
Great.
One, I'd like to give a huge, big thank-out, thank you, a shout-out to Michael Large and the legal team for filing an amicus brief on behalf of Washoe County regarding the Baker Appeal to the Ninth Circuit Court, NACO, along with several other counties and entities, including Persian County, Wypen County, Persian County Water Conservation District, and more are a party to this. The case addresses the lower court's grant of sovereign immunity to the federal government in cases involving pre-McCarren Amendment, um, in terms of, um, state water decrees that could have, you know, huge implications, not only, um, for water rights, not only for Nevada, but implications throughout the state and potentially the country. So it's anticipated the decision will occur sometime in the late spring, summer of 2026, and I thought I'd share that with everyone. My second, uh, request is I would like to make a formal request that procedures, policies, and processes, processes be reviewed and update for the citizens' advisory boards. I know it's been a while. I know that there's been a lot of moving parts, but my formal request, in my opinion, is that there isn't anything as close as working as a Commissioner with our cabs, and I certainly welcome an opportunity to participate as, as it's, uh, appropriate, but I do think that there's some hard work starting, but I, again, would like to make that formal request, and I'll follow the procedures as, um, written in terms of following up and writing with the same request. Um, another item that I'd like to share with everyone is Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful is holding a cleanup, um, in Golden Eagle Regional Park, and it's scheduled for March 29th from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. Volunteers are needed, and you can sign up at the KTMB, um, website. And the last item I have is another shout-out to Brian Beffer on two fronts. You know, I spoke with one of my constituents about some barriers that were in place. He's a business owner, he and his wife, who've been working, he's a retired teacher, actually they both are. And they really wanted to be able to contribute to our community and have been for several years in terms of growing fruits and vegetables and creating gardens in all of our schools. And so, um, Brian really helped to facilitate continuing that process, and I'd like to thank him for all his hard work. And for almost two years, I know that most of you have heard of me talk about the Court of Antiquities, and I'd like to do a huge shout-out for Brian Beffer collaborating with me to create an opportunity to bring all the stakeholders together to address the End of the World Camp or, or the Court of Antiquities, or whatever is the appropriate term in preserving the river and the hundreds of petroglyphs that are at that location. We are in the process of setting up a meeting, or actually, we have the meeting date, and the invitation, um, has gone out. The Chairman, Tribal Chairman, uh, for the Reno-Sparks Indian Colony, and I wrote a letter to all of the stakeholders that we're inviting to this meeting, so I'm excited to keep everybody apprised as this develops. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One thing that, uh, I wanna bring up first is, uh, the time that we just sat here. We had over 40 people in the room. Each of them lost a half an hour of their life. You know, that's over 20, uh, man-hours for, for this. I don't know why this started. I know this is, uh, the, the policy now, public comment ends before 11:00, but I think this is an absolute waste of time to sit here and twiddle our thumbs. Forty people have to wait to, uh, conduct the, the rest of the meeting. We've got a long day. We always have a long day. We all have other things to do. We have other commitments and other things going on. This to have 40 people held hostage here for, for a half an hour because there wasn't enough public comment just absolutely doesn't make sense. And I'd like a better explanation of why that came into play. I know when we took away public, early public comment, uh, a year or so ago, this was the outcome of that, after we got public comment coming back at the, the start of the meeting, then we decided to have, uh, a break if we didn't go to 11 o'clock. I, I just don't understand the logic of that, wasting people's time. We've got other things to do. Uh, and I might be wasting your time right now, but I'm gonna put it on the record because, uh, I think it's, uh, we've done this quite a few times, and it's just an absolute waste of time. That's the first part. Um, you know, this is, uh, this is Reno did an excellent article over the weekend, or I guess it was, uh, an op-ed, uh, talking about the media being in partnership with the county. Uh, you know, in my world, in the real world, I think the media should be the watchdog for the people and not be in a partnership arrangement with the county. They're citizens, they're taxpayers, they're, they're voters, and, uh, we, as the county, should be in partnership with those folks, but the media should be watching everything and reporting everything and not having, uh, that kind of a cozy relationship. Which leads me to my next point. AB 51, apparently spearheaded by the Mayor of Sparks, wants to limit the media from public records, limit the citizens from public records, make it more difficult than it already is to get public records. They're down in Carson City trying to convince the, the statewide legislators to do that. I don't think that's a good idea. I think the public should have a, a right to see and know everything their elected officials and their, um, county employees are doing. The public has a right to have, uh, have input and notice and, and make it easier for folks to get information, make it easier for the media to get information. I know I have to file requests for public record. I can't, as a sitting, uh, Commissioner can't get a lot of information that I'm looking for, and when I do, it's less than the whole truth. Let's just say that. So public records, I'm all about public records, and people should have the ability to do that, so I do not support AB 51. Next, we've got some in, uh, information or, uh, uh, topic on our, uh, on our agenda today about the, uh, County Commission Chair Handbook, or the handbook for the County Commissioners. And, uh, you know, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to have my attorney look at that before I get involved in, in voting on that. And I'd also like to have something, if we do make changes in the handbook, we ought to have something in there that makes sure that the Commissioners or the Chair make factual representations, representations that are substantiated. If we read again, and, uh, this is Reno talking about, uh, Chair making statements that, that are absolutely incorrect. How can somebody make incorrect statements and, and use the, the weight of the county's good name and the state legislators and, and use information from 2022 or 2023 with regards of reducing homelessness by 40% here in the county? Has anybody seen that with their own eyes? I haven't. I'm around the county all over the place. I haven't seen a, a massive reduction. 40%? It's almost, that's almost like saying we cut homelessness in half. Has anybody witnessed that? Why would somebody say that? So if we're gonna- So if we're going to change the rulebook, I think we should have something in there about the other commissioners get to opt into a comment that we feel is incorrect. So that's what I'd like to talk about. And then lastly, there's been a lot of controversy about animal control. One of their board meetings got hacked. Somebody came in and, you know, started the nonsense of racial stuff and Nazism and all kinds of other stuff. But, you know, that same exact thing happened to the senior meeting a couple of weeks ago. And it was hardly a word said about it. Didn't make the news. Nobody really cares if the seniors get hacked like that and their meeting bombed. But it turns into a big deal if it happens somewhere else. Again, there's, we need to treat everybody equally. If the seniors were offended by this, so be it. If the people at animal control were offended, so be it. But it's just as big of a deal at the seniors as it is at the animal control. So I just want to get that on the record. We were also offended by the nasty words and images that we had to look at. So, you know, it just almost goes hand-in-hand with other things that seniors are thought about on the second or third or fourth level treatment. So I need to stick up for the seniors, and I'm putting that on the record. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board members have comments? I'm not seeing that anyone does. So we'll now move into Item 5. Manager Brown.
Madam Chair, Item 5 is a presentation by Darren Griffin, President and CEO of the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority to provide an executive airport update.
Chair Hill, good morning. Darren Griffin, for the record, President and CEO of Reno Tahoe Airport Authority, members of the commission. It's great to see you all this morning. Manager Brown, great to see you. Thanks for having me this morning. This is our opportunity to visit with you, one of our appointing authorities. About once a year, we make the rounds, if you will, and update our appointing bodies of what's going on at the airport, how things are going, and looking forward to doing that for you this morning. Quick update on how businesses, air travel, how it's doing in our region. I'll talk about our capital program, more RNO. Hopefully, you've heard of that, what we're doing in the community. And of course, any questions that you have for me. Happy to do my best to take any questions that you have when I'm done here. You all know who we are, I believe, a quasi-municipal entity that operates like a business and a government at the same time. Our board is made up of nine individuals, two of them you put on the board. And they are with me here today, Trustee Adam Kramer and Trustee Courtney Young, right behind me here. Trustee Young is currently our Board Treasurer and chairs the Airport Finance Committee. And Trustee Kramer is a past Chair of the Board and serves as our Air Service Liaison. Both very active and engaged in everything that we have going on. So my personal thanks to this body for giving me great board members. We have a lot going on at the airport and a big vision that I'll talk to you about. And that only happens when you have a board that has vision and conviction, is willing to make big decisions to push infrastructure and that vision forward. So thank you so much for that. And the rest of our board, four members from the City of Reno, two from the City of Sparks, and one from the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority. How are we doing? We're doing really good. Last year, late 2023, we updated our economic impact study. There's a lot of data on this slide, and what I like to draw people's attention to is the airplane part there. $129,500 of impact every time a 737, 800 lands at RNO. That's our most common aircraft landing. You've all flown in them lots of times. And every time one of those comes in, we have a significant economic impact, both from the people that live here, but more especially from people that are visiting here, arriving by air. And we see more and more of the region's visitors arriving by air, just past the halfway mark now. As our numbers grow and people really realize it's the easiest and quickest way to get to northern Nevada, we see more and more passenger counts. So we're excited for that economic impact, always trying to grow it as an airport authority, trying to provide tremendous value to the region that we serve through our aviation infrastructure and partnerships with commercial airlines and private industry. Busiest year in almost two decades in 2024, and that's a big deal. It's been almost 20 years since we've seen these kinds of numbers at the airport. And it really started last summer. We had a significant increase in seats. And seats in our market is what we're always trying to achieve, more flights. Well, we really measure it by seats, and we know exactly how many we have. Sorry. 90,000-plus seats added last summer, and our region did a phenomenally good job of filling those seats, going both directions. We saw a 4% increase in passenger traffic in the fall, which typically you see sort of a falloff as schools go back into session, less families taking vacation, and we still did really good in the fall. So we're so pleased with how we finished 2024, 4.8 million. So we're getting close to 5 million total passengers, which is a big number for this region to have as ticketed passengers through the airport. That doesn't count meters and greeters and other people just doing business at the airport. That is people that have actually paid to fly in and out of the region. It's a really big region. A million people consider RNO their local airport. But you all know how far it is to drive to Winnemucca or Fernley, Fallon, Mendon, Gardnaville. All of those are customers, and we think about them when planning the airport, when planning airport infrastructure, what the customer experience is. We know a lot of people, of course, live close to us, but we also have many customers driving a long ways, South Lake Tahoe, Truckee, that entire catchment area. It's huge for any airport. And so we're really proud of that and the partnerships we have across the catchment area, but we don't lose sight of who our customer is, and that is many families making long drives to the airport to start their vacations. A little bit about RNO specifically, this is a great slide that kind of divides our land into two different areas as we identify the kind of aqua-green color there. That's the operating airfield, runways, taxiways. The rules are extremely strict there, right? The security rules, the safety rules, that's the operating part of our airfield, all three of our runways. And we think about that as sort of its own entity. And then it's surrounded by dark-blue land, which is the land that we are developing. And you've seen development at the airport. I'll talk a little bit about that. This is also how we think of our public safety mission. The airfield is sort of a sacred location for public safety. And you are all, I think, aware that we are in the process of entering into an interlocal agreement for our fire services at the airport and transferring our fire mission to the City of Reno, who we reside completely within their jurisdiction. We are in the final stage of that transfer, and our first mission is aircraft rescue and firefighting. It's been in the news a lot lately for all the wrong reasons, but it really helps us remember how important it is that when something happens on the airfield, we have the fastest possible response with the deepest set of resources to save lives, which you've all seen video evidence of in the very recent history. We've all seen that. And we don't need the reminder. In our business, we're training for this all the time, whether it's the City of Reno providing that service, or us directly, or in partnership together. The federal standards for aircraft rescue and firefighting are extremely strict. And we're looking forward to entering into this partnership, less about the aircraft rescue and firefighting mission, because that is unchanged and will always be the first priority, but more about what's happening on the rest of our land. We have a number of projects that are underway that we're going to talk about this morning, but also industrial development, hotels on the airport property, rental car centers coming, new concourses, larger concourses. The vertical infrastructure is growing substantially, and that was a major factor in us reaching the decision. It was really in our best interest to put the best possible resources for aircraft rescue and firefighting and our all-hazard mission around the airport. The biggest recent development that you have seen is just south of the airport, in what's titled the Airway Commerce Center, developed by Toll's Development. 890,000 square feet of offices, showrooms, distribution warehouses, and light manufacturing space, a major development on airport property. And what I will say was is probably the most difficult piece of land to develop because of its close proximity to the end of the runway. Very strict rules about what you can even build there. And Par Toll's and his team found an answer that met the FAA requirements of what can you legally put there that keeps people safe, keeps businesses safe, but also puts the land to good use. It's a much better neighbor than what we had there before, and we're super excited about the green belt that's been put around it, which also strictly adheres to FAA requirements around birds. Birds and planes don't mix, obviously. And so lots of science in all of that. So we're super excited about this development and adding that to the airport neighborhood. Up at the Sted Airport, we're also hard at work on development with Dermody Properties. And you've all seen the Reno Air Logistics Park, which is in construction right now on the west side of the airport with an extension of Moana Boulevard there. That's being done by Dermody Development in our public-private partnership. We own the land. They're responsible for the development of the land up at that airport. And then, of course, the world's first lithium-sulfur battery giga factory was announced last October on the east side of the airport. A billion-dollar investment from Leighton into northern Nevada and North Valleys. We're excited about that partnership as well. As sort of an update on where we're at with that, that is an announcement only at this point. We are in an ongoing discussion with Leighton and Dermody around a land lease, around a development agreement. As you all might imagine, it's complicated, it's going slow, but we're in the conversation with Leighton. I don't have anything more than that to report in terms of where are we in the deal-making process. It's Dermody Properties, Edon, of course, Airport Authority and Leighton, all in sort of a four-party conversation of how would this get put together. But what we have right now is their expressed intent, which is certainly exciting to have a company like this from San Jose looking to make an investment like this in northern Nevada. Air service, a really important part of the slide deck that I share with people. This is something that is near and dear to everybody's heart. This is our current, really roadmap, if you will, of where are we on routes. And the blue routes are full year. Pretty much every day, you have those options available to you as non-stop routes. The yellow routes are more seasonal. Summertime, we get a lot of additional flying. Everybody's going on vacation in the summertime. So you see the airlines come in here and they add flights like Minneapolis and JetBlue to JFK and Houston Intercontinental. We're always working to turn those yellow lines into blue lines. That's the first way to recruit new air service, is to take those flights that are here either right now in the ski season or in the summertime, and get them year-round. You can see the airline lineup on the right-hand side there. Eleven airlines for a community this size is tremendous air service. We never take that for granted. Frontier just got added to the list. They resume flying here next week. They left a couple of years ago, and they're coming back significantly with flights to Denver and Las Vegas, two really strong markets for people that live here. This is the list of the dots on the map of places we would like to see more flying or flying for the first time. Of course, we always want to hang on to what we have, and so that's the blue dots like you just saw, Austin, Houston, Chicago. We don't want to lose anything. That's the first battle in air service. All communities are competing for airlines and airplanes. Every community does. Even large hub airports are constantly trying to attract more flights. For us, we want to hang on to what we have, and then we want to add to the map, right? The route map, the battery belt, you've all heard plenty about that. There's a lot of connectivity between northern Nevada and the southeast. We see where people are flying. The data is zip code-driven, and we can see there's a lot of flights to the southeast. So we're in a lot of conversations around Nashville, Kansas City, Charleston, Charlotte. All of those locations would be, any of them would be a win for us to get a nonstop to the southeast. Orlando for different reasons. The Disney traffic is significant to Orlando. That's always going to be there, and someday we will have that nonstop. And then, of course, Hawaii is actually our number-one unserved destination. That's all of the Hawaiian islands put together, though it's not any one. But every day, we have enough people going to Hawaii to pretty much fill a 737. We just have to find the airline that's willing to fly that. It's a long route. We're a high-altitude airport, takes a lot of fuel. But we are getting there. With Alaska and Hawaiian merging, we think that creates new opportunities for a market our size to attract nonstop to Hawaii. And then, of course, Mexico. We watch Mexico and Canada probably pretty closely. Our nonstop to Guadalajara on Volaris does fantastic. Five days a week, that plane is almost always full. That's a friends-and-family flight. That's not tourism necessarily. There's a tremendous community here that uses that flight and goes back and forth. So the beach markets, Puerto Vallarta, Cancun are on the list. And then, of course, Canada, Vancouver, Calgary, also markets that we're eyeing. And the advantage there is you clear customs in Canada before you get on the airplane and fly into the United States, which right now is a challenge to get customs officers to a community this size. We have four total who handle that Volaris flight, and we would like some more that would allow us to have Volaris fly some more, because Volaris is doing great here, and they would like to have more flights. So the capital program, more RNO. That's sort of an oblique map of our campus, and everything in blue there is everything that is part of this program, whether it's the, you know, the Ground Transportation Center to the far-left there, all the way around the terminal buildings there, and then, of course, the roadways. And so by project, we've got a couple of them done already. You're familiar with the ticketing hall expansion. That's complete and looks fantastic. The reviews on that have been outstanding, and it did exactly what we needed it to do, which is just create more room for people to move around in that ticketing hall. We're a market where there's a lot of skis, a lot of snowboards, a lot of golf clubs, and a lot of checked baggage. And so that was really necessary. We're super happy with how that turned out. The Loop Road is also complete, a complete reconstruction of all eight lanes there, which is extremely difficult place to work, because you don't ever close the airport to work on it. And so appreciate everybody's patience on the construction zone that that was for the better part of a year. But that is completely done. It's safer, more visibility. The drop-off curb there is brighter, better signage, and the crosswalks are raised, just trying to keep people safe. There's a lot of people crossing that roadway, and a lot of rental cars being returned where they're focused on the rental car signage and not the people in front of them. And so we feel really good about that part of the program being complete. Under construction now is the Ground Transportation Center, which is a public-private partnership, the first that we have entered into. We could not afford to finance a rental car center for this region. We have new concourses that we are putting all of our bonding capacity into. So this was a partnership with a developer and the rental cars themselves to have somebody else come in and pay for a $300 million rental car center, also Ground Transportation Center. It's where Uber and Lyft and cabs will operate from as well. I'll go back a slide. It is almost a city block on the far-left side of the screen there. And so right now, enabling projects are under construction. We are going to have to tear down some of the buildings that are in that big blue block. Those buildings are being replaced. Those replacement buildings are under construction now and will open late this year. And then, late this year, we will groundbreak the actual rental car center itself. And then, in about two years, two and a half years, that will be done. Very excited about that one. It creates much-needed parking. And I'm sure you're, like you all, we're, get a bit of a headache around the parking challenges that we have at the airport. It's a good problem to have. We have a lot of customers, and we have a lot of people who, that is their only way of getting to the airport because of the distance that they're driving. They always need a place to park. This project will bring back 600 spaces to us from the garage right now where people rent their cars, and that's prime real estate in addition to some additional parking that we'll get. So we're excited for this project. Our developer and our P3 partnership is performing fantastic, and we're excited for that. And allows us to focus on our police and Airport Authority Headquarters and two new concourses. The Airport Authority Headquarters and Police Station is really to move us out of the terminal building. We don't have to be in that building. That's a 1960 building that was built for the Winter Olympics in 1960. It has not been expanded in any significant way since that time. Frontier's coming back. We are virtually out of space for airlines. And so we sit above the airlines in pretty prime real estate. We also have tenants on the lower concourses like TSA and concessionaire operators that would rather not be in that sterile area where you have to have a badge or be escorted. So we are moving out so that the people and tenants that have to be in the terminal building to serve customers can be there instead. We will be right next door. This will be just south of the terminal building. The first floor is our new police station. We don't really have a public-facing police station today, and we need one. Policing in the airport is complicated business. There's a lot of different things that we deal with, with airlines and customs and trafficking inside a unique environment. And so a police presence is critical to what we do, and having a police station that's public-facing is also going to be a huge addition. Of course, the big project here is new concourses. And by new concourses, I mean the gates that you're used to using. Concourses B and C, as they're called today, will all be replaced. We will tear those concourses down. We will build new concourses on the We will build new concourses on the outside of each of those. So you see the existing concourses at the top of the screen there. Outboard of each concourse, we will build new concourses, wider, taller, with much better customer amenities, larger hold rooms to handle larger aircraft that we already have serving this region today. Also creates a wider alley so we can get aircraft in and out quicker and easier. Nobody waits for anybody else. And really leaps the customer experience forward. When you fly from Reno, you fly to new gates in Denver, or Phoenix, or Las Vegas, or somewhere in LA. Everywhere you go, you see airport construction projects. And the experience that we have here falls further and further behind. And that is why the airlines have agreed to support this project. It is, I'll get to the budget in a second, but it's $650 million and we're struggling to keep it at that price point for 25 new gates and a whole new customer experience, 100% gate replacement. It's a rare project, but nobody else is trying to do this at an airport our size. And it's a challenge for us of a generation to pull off a project like this with the support of our airlines, support of the FAA, support of our board's vision, and all of you, that this community needs this really now, but especially in the 2030s. And that's what we think about, that what are the aircraft that will be serving this region in the next decade? Because if we don't build it now, we won't have it. It takes five to 10 years to do something like this. And so we're on track. We're in design for both concourses, about 60% design right now, the enabling project. So we, we got to build some more ramp. We got to build a central utility plant. Those projects will begin later this summer. And so we are on our way on this one. But it is lots of headwinds when you try and do something this large. Money chief among them, but also, you know, economic volatility. Our biggest airline, as you all know, is Southwest. They had a rough week last week with their first-ever reduction in force of 1,700 of their employees. So we pay close attention to that when Southwest has to stay aligned with us on an investment of this size in Reno, Nevada. A big part of the customer experience that we are going to create with the more RNO program and especially the concourses is our art program, and which is well on its way with a one-of-a-kind art installation in the new ticketing hall. A big thank you to Bethany Drysdale, who is representing your interest and our public art committee, which is a who's who of the fine art experts in this region. I know little to nothing about fine art. And so we rely on really great experts and talented people across the region to help us implement our board's vision of a 1% for art. And 1% of a billion-dollar program is a lot of art and we're excited about that. And so thank you to Bethany. Thank you to you Chair Hill for being part of our We Love Public Art campaign video. And we're just promoting how valuable art is in an airport environment. And airports didn't figure this out until about 20 years ago. And now you see great art at a lot of airports because it significantly adds to the quality of the customer experience. It reduces stress. We all feel more stressed when in an airport, whether you're flying or picking somebody up or whatever, it's a chaotic environment. And public art just brings that sense of calm. And so we are committed to achieving the board's vision for that 1% investment. And thank you so much for your partnership. Sustainability is also a critical part of what we're working on, looking through that lens continually at all of the projects that I've just described to you. Trustee Jung, a former member of this body, is our board liaison to our Sustainability Advisory Committee. And that group looks at everything from the noise impacts around the airport, from aircraft noise, to when you build a ground transportation center in a P3, we know there's going to be a lot of electric cars in our future and how are we thinking about that? The water reduction that we'll see by building new concourses, it's north of 70% reduction in water consumption. I could go on and on, but we're all used to this now. In all public works, we're really thinking about sustainability and how do we reduce costs, reduce emissions, and our impact to the environment and people that we serve? The total program, there's no sum total there, but it's about $1 billion. It's just north of a billion. The first two numbers are projects that are complete. The P3 is etched in stone. If it costs more than that, we'll never know it because that deal has been inked and that's what they're on the hook to deliver. Our police station headquarters is at $70 million and, like I said, $650 million airline-backed full concourse replacement. We can't really borrow more than what we're already borrowing. We can only leverage the authority so far. We have a very smart plan about that. Our debt was rated for the first time in 20 years last summer. We got an A rating, which is about as good as airports can do from the public sector. So we were super happy with that and we issued our first debt last August. And we're not debt-free anymore, but we're issuing debt for the right reasons. As a quasi-municipal entity, our job is to invest in infrastructure and provide an airport that meets the needs of this community. And we do that through issuing bonds. We don't do anything alone, whether it's partnering with you and the staff here and Manager Brown and everything we work on together, or DOT. You can see the alphabet groups there. We rely on the help of a lot of different partnerships, both locally, statewide, and even nationally, with the associations of airports that we participate in to track legislation that could impact us or to generate interest in the business community for what we're doing here. And so we're just so grateful for the community that we're a part of and all of the great partnerships that help us provide airport infrastructure and experiences that you're proud of, but also the input that we get so that it keeps us centered on making sure we're working on the right things, that these are the things that matter to the community leaders and members of our community that use this airport and the people that visit us. Community events, you know, if you've been to any of these, thank you. If you haven't, you see it pop up, please join us, whether it's flight celebrations or music performances. We support, you know, girls in aviation or youth in aviation, always trying to give back to our industry. We need the next generation to be excited about aviation so that we have people pick up what we're doing in the future. Our partnership with the Children's Cabinet for Operation Santa Claus is something we're super proud of. Burning Man is something we perfected. So proud of my team and the pre- and post-Burning Man efforts of getting people ready to get back on an airplane after 10 days out in the desert. And that includes cleanliness and their personal appearance that's acceptable on an airplane. We go to a lot of effort to help them have a great experience arriving and departing. It's 100 bus trips out of the airport out to the Playa. And it's a well-oiled machine and it is our busiest day of the year. We had a 10,000-passenger day when people started coming back out of the desert last summer. And 10,000 people in a day through that airport is a big number. And it's because of Burning Man. It's our biggest week. We value that event. It's like our Super Bowl, right? Every year, the big airports get the Super Bowls. We get Burning Man. And we're so proud of the partnership with the Burning Man organization specifically. They do a great job and we're proud to partner with them. That's all I have for you. I'm happy to take any questions on any of this or anything else. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. That's a great update for our board. I will look to board members to see if there are any questions or comments. Vice Chair Herman.
Since you've answered all the questions I had.
Great.
Your presentation was wonderful and really explained a lot of what's going on out there. There's special training necessary for fire crews at an airport. So how is Reno being, is Reno going to be prepared for that, for that, you know, adding them?
Sure. Thank you for the question. And so we have 24 firefighters presently at the airport that have that special training that you're referring to. And they go to a national academy in Texas and get that special training. Those 24 will transfer at midnight, one night at the beginning of a pay period from our employment to the city's employment. And so they will stay in role. They'll continue working shifts. And we will be sending additional City of Reno firefighters to that Texas training so that we actually get a more of a bench depth, that when we've exhausted those 24 firefighters, we have a pool to pull from that can come out to the airport fire station and take some of those shifts, work side-by-side with our present firefighters. And so that training will always be, it's required, it's federal law that they have that training. One of the big wins we're getting here is those 24 are it in terms of that specialized training. And to have that bench depth that we can pull on at the airport is a big win for us. Thank you.
Right. And thank you for your help regarding that airplane.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have two questions. But first, we all know a high-functioning airport is critical to the economic vitality. So I wanted to give a shout-out to our two wonderful appointees for signing up for this and being so committed to such an important part of our economic vitality here in Washoe County. So thank you. I appreciate the airport's emphasis on sustainability and art. When I took the tour, what was it, last year now? There was talk about having some outdoor spaces in those newly remodeled concourse A and concourse B. Is that still part of the plan?
That is still the plan. I would say they're on a list of things that if we run out of money, it's going to get harder to get them. But I personally feel very strongly that outdoor space is something you see a lot of airports doing for all the reasons we all know that breath of fresh air is critically important. So my gut tells me, one way or another, we will find a way to include that because I think current, modern airport experiences really include that. And the US was slower to that ballgame. European airports figured this out a long time ago, where you have decks overlooking flight, you know, flight activity and you get fresh air. So we are still planning to include those for sure. Thank you.
Great. And then, I think on my tour, I honed in on the ticketing hall, the new concourses, the ground transportation center. But the one thing that kind of went over my head and I didn't really pay attention to until today was the police and airport headquarters. So you mentioned that there's going to be a space released for tenants. Do you already have people in mind for those spaces who, yeah, talk to me about the tenants you have in mind?
Sure. So the space that we are going to vacate, we are in conversations right now with the TSA. So right now, the TSA has a significant amount of space on lower-level concourse B. So we're going to tear that concourse down. That's not really where you want an administrative function. And in a lot of airports, TSA occupies pre-security space. So we're looking to potentially relocate them up there. We also have concessionaires that have storage space or administrative space on the lower-level concourses who also would rather be pre-security, but they were put out there because we had no other place to put them. And as we're building new concourses, you want to make sure you're building really expensive space for the right tenants. And so that is part of the thinking, as well as reserving space for airlines that would arrive that need more space or that need to grow, or airline service providers as well. Just, we don't have any place to put anybody right now. And so it's one, sort of the immediate need. And I would also point out that when you visit our boardroom, if you're sitting on the dais, there's a wall behind you, behind that wall is the escalators that bring you out of security. The boardroom is literally space that could be converted to part of the post-checkpoint experience, whether it was food and beverage, retail, coffee, you name it. We don't have space for that either. So we're doing a number of different analysis of how would we repurpose that space so that it serves the customers, but also our tenants and those that have to be in the building.
Great. And if we could go to the slide where it has the image of the headquarters, I don't know what slide that is. I guess the question I had is, will the four stories that are kind of depicted in this design include the availability for any outside tenants? Or is it strictly operations and administration for the airport?
It is for the Airport Authority, at least initially. And as we have fully mapped out the design of the space and it moves pretty much our entire administrative workforce and our entire police force into that building, and that's what it's sized for. I wouldn't rule out down the road, though, that we may decide to repurpose some of that space if we had a tenant that had a need or somebody that wanted an adjacency to our police department. I think we're certainly open to ways to create that revenue-generating space because when you build something for yourself, there's no revenue coming back. And we're very mindful of that on the budget and how we're going to use the space. But certainly partnerships down the road, we'd always be open to having those conversations.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrea.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership and to the incredible board that you have and the staff. And it's a heavy lift what you're doing. And I really wanted to talk really quick about the slide that you had displayed where you specifically called out the 129,500. But it also is amazing to look at that same slide that has operations, including tenants that support our state and local governments by generating an estimated $82.3 million per year. And I'm wondering if that number is going to change as you leap, and that's a leap, to the estimation of 5.5 million in approximately 2032? And I was wondering if you could speak to that?
Sure. Thank you. Great, great question, right? I mean, this is a forecast of where we think we're going to be in 2032. I wouldn't be surprised if we outperform that. When you look at the growth in this region, and I was reminded of it last week at the Edon luncheon, of the tremendous amount of growth. Sorry, there's an automation in this slide. It keeps forwarding. The tremendous amount of growth this region is experiencing. The airport is just a barometer of economic vitality of a region. That's all we are. Some of it we generate ourselves through tenant activity around the airfield. The rest of it is through people coming to visit us or people taking business trips. And as that number grows, that economic impact will grow. We try to be conservative in that estimate for financial modeling and not over-promising, if you will. But I wouldn't be surprised to see us outperform it. That economic impact will increase as that does. One of the key metrics that's changed here is we look at numbers that say it's the biggest day in 20 years. And I've tried to understand what was happening here 20 years ago. What was happening was 70% of the people flying through this airport didn't live here. They were visiting for gaming. And of course, the gaming industry has changed significantly, right? With casinos and many on Native American reservations. And so we don't have as much gaming traffic flying in as we did 20 years ago. Tremendous amount of drive traffic. The lake has always been there, so we've always had the lake traffic. The difference here is our population base. And we are 55, 45, and sometimes, some days, we're closer to 50/50 on who's using the airport. It's people with a zip code that live here because our population is growing. They are taking trips out of the region. COVID changed that. People are taking longer trips now. And so they stay in our parking system longer because they can blend work and business. And they're taking trips they might not have otherwise taken because they can do both. So we're being conservative here in our forecast and on the economic impact forecast. And like I said, we do that because the rating agencies don't want to see an airport promising the world in terms of how well can I pay the debt back 10 years from now? But I will tell you that 5.5 million is not going to take us long to get there at the rate we're going right now. And 2032 feels like a long, a long time from now. So we'll see if we beat that number, but I know we will beat the economic impact as airlines grow, as the airplanes get larger. All of those things contribute to that economic impact.
Thanks. I sometimes feel like the slogan of the biggest little city in the world should be changed to the littlest biggest city in the world. Because it certainly feels that, I'm reminded how many times by folks that I know saying we're a big city, we're a big city. And I think the importance of the vision that you've had and being able to accommodate that and the return on that is immense. I have one more point that I'm hoping you can share. And I, when I met with you, you spoke about this and I think it's worthy of sharing with everyone. Of the challenges of an airport being literally, the unusualness, the uniqueness of having an airport right smack, if you will, in our city versus an airport that was out in the middle of a, like Sted, for instance, expecting it to be maybe what Sted is in terms of distance. And I thought it would be very helpful for you to also address the fact that those are additional challenges that put the burden of what you're doing at even an immense scale. And maybe you could speak to that? And then, how does this compare to other airports in terms of similar size being in the heart of a city? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. And it is a unique, somewhat unique situation in that the city has really grown around the airport. We are right in the heart of everything and one that's incredibly advantageous. I've had so many people tell me how much they love having the airport a very short drive unless you're living in the rest of that catchment area. If you live around town, it's very easy to get to us, right? And so we benefit from that convenience and the experience that people have at the airport. And we don't ever take that for granted. As we're growing, it gets more difficult to grow, right? Because we have a greater impact on the neighborhoods around us. And we're extremely mindful of how that growth progresses, the impact of aircraft noise. We're very engaged in those conversations. Sometimes you all may even get pulled into emails where people are unhappy with flights that they see or something different. people are unhappy with flights that they see, or something different in the air above them. We're a little unusual. And then, if you go to comparable sized airports, you know, Spokane is way outside the city. Tucson is, you know, not nearly as surrounded as we are. It's really just a function of history and where this airport was cited, and the town that's grown up around it, and the challenges it poses for us to grow to meet the needs of the region without unduly impacting those that live around the airport. And we're under a federal mandate to be a great neighbor. We would be a great neighbor anyways, even if we weren't told to by the FAA, because we live here and work here too. And so, we have a lot of conversations with tenants around how to fly neighborly. We have a lot of conversations with those around us around what can we do to be a better neighbor, whether it's surface transportation, or something in the air, or how we're developing our land here and at the Stead Airport. So, it's a very symbiotic relationship in that we are where we're going to be forever, I would imagine, or a very long time. Although occasionally, people ask me if we should move commercial air service to the Stead Airport. And if you ask the, you know, general population, they wouldn't like that idea very much because it's so convenient to access this airport. It also puts constant pressure on us to be a great neighbor and to think carefully before we take actions that might impact those around us. And I'm okay with that. I think all airports should always be thinking that way anyways. It's just sort of a constant for us to do that when you've got a freeway next to you and casinos and a residential neighborhood and industrial development all around. It's a great mix of neighbors for us. And so, we try not to lose sight of that. And hopefully, that gets a little bit to the conversation that we have. But if I miss anything, let me know.
No, thank you. Well, congratulations on your A rating and thanks for the great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank you for your excellent report, very informative, and thank you for the update. Good work. Thank you.
And we appreciate you taking the time. We're really proud of our appointees and the work that they've been doing on the board and the entire board. And thank you for coming to our community and really enhancing this economic engine. And we look forward to continuing to support however we can at the county level. And let us know. We'll be in touch.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, may I interject? Yes, Manager Brown.
I'd just like to publicly thank Darren because as the county started considering public-private partnerships, P3s, and Darren was very forthcoming with what they are doing, and you heard about it, with the $300 million project on the ground transportation system. Darren, thank you. And we'll continue to pick your brain and those of your folks over there with expertise.
Anytime. Happy to share. It was a first for us, and we all learn as we go through these things. But I'm so grateful that we did and happy to share anything that would be helpful to the county. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. All right. We'll now move on to item six. Manager Brown.
Item six is a presentation by Andrew McDonald, Washoe County Registrar Voters, to provide an update on various initiatives and developments within the Registrar of Voters' office.
Still morning. Hello and good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Andrew McDonald. I'm the newly appointed Registrar Voters here in Washoe County. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this great community. I'm here to provide an update on the Registrar Voters' Office. Most of this presentation is revolving around questions Commissioners have had since the general election. This is an overview slide that provides topics we'll touch on today. Starting with the November 2024 election recap, I provided daily update slides as shown here to the Office of the County Manager, who in turn provided those to you. The total turnout for the election was 79%, with 51% of the voters voting in person, and 49% of the voters voting their mail ballot. On November 14th, all validly cast ballots were entered into the count. November 15th, the Board of County Commissioners meeting at the campus of the vote, it was approved. November 20th was the last day to request a recount, which none was requested. As a gentle reminder, we provided five ways for voters to cure their challenged mail ballots: visit in person, call our office, mail, text a cure, or scan the QR code as seen up on the screen. Our office called, emailed, and cured affidavits for challenged voters. It's also worth mentioning, email and phone numbers are not optional fields on the registration application, and many of those voters do not provide information, making it hard for us to contact those voters by those specific means. There were roughly 1,900 voters who cured their challenged ballot and 1,000 that did not cure. We also acknowledge that political parties stated that the challenged voter report could be enhanced. We are working with our vendors and reaching out to the political parties to improve the reporting process on our website during future elections. Undeliverable ballots. Per the State at NRS, mail ballots are not forwardable and must be returned to the Registrar Voters' Office by the United States Postal Service if the voter is no longer listed at the mailing address on file within the voter registration system. Receiving undeliverable mail ballot back serves as an indicator to send an address confirmation card to the voter on file. This is the initial step in the process to inactivate a voter. Undeliverable ballots for the primary, we had about 25,000. For the general, about 22,000. In the general election, 10,000 voters either updated their mailing address after receiving their mail ballot, therefore they were sent a new mail ballot, and other voters went to the polls and updated their address and voted in person. Because of this action was taken, these voters are active and no address confirmation cards will be sent. However, 12,000 voters did not take an action during the general election, update their address, or vote in person, and we will be sending address confirmation cards to them in March. This will start the 33-day clock to inactivate a voter if they do not take action on that card. The next four slides focus on voter list maintenance and roll activities. The list maintenance process for inactivation requires three basic steps. When official election mail or correspondence comes back to our office as returned undeliverable, that triggers an address confirmation card to be sent to the voter on the address within our system. When our office does not receive a response, nor does the voter update their record within 33 days, our office can start the inactivation process. On February 20th, we inactivated 8,628 remaining voters from the primary election who did not vote in the general and did not update their record. On March 14th, our office will begin sending address confirmation cards for all undeliverable ballots from the 2024 general election, as mentioned on the previous slide. April 16th is the earliest date we can start the voter inactivation based on the 33-day process. The Secretary of State also is requesting the ROV to perform analysis to send out future address confirmation cards for voters who did not vote in the presidential preference primary, the primary, or the general election, and did not have any voter-initiated activity with our office. Inactivation timeline. In June of 2024, roughly 48,000 address confirmation cards were sent. 19,000 actions were taken by the ROV to update those records. 29,000 were actionable, but due to the tight time deadline, it was missed for August. Since then, 7,500 voters updated their records, leaving 21,500 voters inactive from the 48,000. Of those 21,500, we recently inactivated 8,600. This closes out the primary inactivations timeline. Voter role list maintenance for cancellations. It's initiated in three ways. The voter takes proactive action to cancel their record, SOS provides reports, and we do bulk voter list maintenance. The process, again, ROV sends a forwardable notice to the active voter. If the voter does not respond, or the notice comes back as undeliverable, the voter is inactivated. The voter does not update the record or vote in two federal general elections. That inactive voter now is canceled. The voter will need to re-register to vote and be able to vote in the upcoming elections. Bulk voter list maintenance schedule. On March 28, 2025, our office will perform bulk voter list maintenance to cancel inactive voters who did not vote in the last two federal general elections for 2022 and 2024, and have not updated their records since that time. We are currently working on the analysis for voter cancellations and could provide that update at a future board meeting or as requested. The next bulk cancellations are scheduled for March 26 in the year 2027, covering inactive voters who did not vote in the 2024 general nor the 2026 general election. An update on the election integrity violation reports, or we call them EIVRs. Nevada Administrative Code 293.025 covers election integrity violation reports in writing to the Secretary of State, whereas our office addresses frequently asked questions on election administration, processes, procedures, and best practices. Currently is the election integrity violation report status. There was 113 Washoe County-related EIVRs submitted during the 2024 election cycle, which includes the presidential preference primary, the primary, and the general elections. 79 of those have been closed with no Title II or election violations. Our office responded to 15 of those and sent back to the Secretary of State for further action. 34 are still open and actively being investigated by the Secretary of State with no current action from our office. The Secretary of State is the custodian of those violation reports and will ask for our input if and as needed. No current EIVRs are seen by, not all, not all current EIVRs are seen by the ROV, and many are closed by the Secretary of State without action from our office. In 2023, a third-party consulting company named The Elections Group was hired to provide an audit and recommendations on the Registrar Voters' Office. Based on the 2022 election cycle, there were 68 categories within that audit and 122 recommendations that came out of it. Based on a recent review from the recommendations, my office provided an update to the audit and posted those updates on the Office of the County Manager website where it was previously located. So, those updates are out there now. If anybody wants to go check them out and see how we did. Lastly, a few items I would like to mention for future board action and information. I'm anticipating a contract extension for our voting system to get us through the 2026 and 2028 election cycle. A contract extension for our voting, I'm sorry, procuring ballot printers, which would allow us to print a full-length ballot out at the locations and have voters view their choices and actually cast their ballot with a paper ballot in their hand. For awareness, the top-down voter registration system has future modules that are being released for the 2026 cycle: petitions, election night reporting, poll care management, and campaign finance, to name a few. There is still an outstanding interlocal agreement that we are working on with the Secretary of State's office for support and future costs to play in that environment. Again, we'll be paying for our portion of the VREM's or Voter Registration Election Management System starting July 1 of 2025. Costs are derived from the number of registered voters per county. Lastly, vote centers. All contracts for the vote centers expired after the 2024 general election. We now have a new opportunity to properly cite vote center locations within the Department of Justice and the ADA or American Disabilities Settlement and to meet the community needs. My office has been in contact with HR to enhance the ADA policies and procedures. And I'm also asking for assistance from the technical services team to provide heat maps for proper citing of these future locations based on specific criteria. This concludes my presentation today. Are there any questions?
Thank you. I will go to Vice Chair Herman. Okay, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you so much for going into the level of detail today. I think today's presentation let us kind of dig below some of the layers that are often talked about by the public, that are often misunderstood by the public. And those are the phone calls that we get. So, I really appreciated the clarity on those slides. In terms of the technology needs, there was a lot of reconfiguration of the space here in Building A in terms of desks and signage and new glass and areas for the press. I saw on one of the slides that you still need a ballot printer, but, and something else. Sorry, I don't have it up right now. Is there any other technological needs that you see coming in the future?
As I specifically mentioned here, I think what we really want to do is provide voters the ability to print a full-length ballot out at the vote centers. That is one of the things that is very important to me and to the voters, as opposed to seeing votes roll up on a verified paper trail. They would actually be able to print out that ballot from that printer, view, and hold that ballot, and then cast it right there at the vote center. That's a little bit costly, but it's something that I think would make a very big difference here for the integrity of the election, for voter confidence. That's the specific thing. I've talked about this, I think, in the past. But of course, we would love to get a new building in the future that can house additional equipment and spread out to be able to process ballots faster. Other than that, I think right now, equipment-wise, we're doing pretty well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, Manager Brown.
I do want to go back to the Registrar's comments about the additional enhancements to the VREM system that needs to take place. We hosted the Speaker of the Assembly at our space, what was it, about a month ago, gave her a tour. And one of the things that we wanted to impress upon her, and I share with you because in your conversations, if it comes up, we need the state to make sure that they continue to finish the job on the additional modules that he was referring to. So, what we implemented for the November election, I think, was one of three phases that are envisioned. I might be wrong about that.
That is correct.
It would be, I know there are budget pressures. There are always, every year, you know, from the state's perspective, there are other competing priorities. But it would be a shame to have come this far and not complete the job. So, I just want to interject that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrea.
Thank you. Thank you so much for going over a lot in just a few slides. It's an immense amount of work, right? I mean, and again, thanks to you and your leadership for going through some pretty significant challenges, but still having everything run really smooth. I realize that the technology and then all the things that happened make it difficult. And I also believe that we won't necessarily know what other things might be coming since we have legislature in session. And so, my question is directly related to, I know that we don't know what that looks like, but in terms of timing, whether it be technology, whether it be the requests that you're looking at for printing out the ballot and then casting it and those kinds of things. And we obviously have 120 days. We don't know special sessions, what we call. There's some uncertainty. But given that, if everything moves through the legislature as anticipated, what do you think the timing is in terms of seeing what may be new from the legislature, but then what may be budget-wise? And I'm asking because of the timing of the budgets, right?
Yes.
So, the legislature isn't necessarily working around our timeline, and we're working around it. So, that's why I'm trying to understand how you see that projected possibly.
Thank you for the question. In regards to buying new equipment, I would like to do that between now and the end of the fiscal year. It's important for us to get that equipment in so we can do mock elections on the new equipment. There is several mock elections the Secretary of State is planning between now and then in the 2026 election cycle. So, the more we get used to the equipment, the more that we can do voter outreach and education. It's no longer you click, cast your ballot, and walk away. You will actually need to take an action when the ballot prints off of the ballot printer and then walk it over and cast it into a machine. So, your vote actually counts. So, there is an outreach and education part to this. So, for me, the sooner, the better to get that accomplished. And yes, other counties in the state of Nevada are moving this way. Clark County just recently purchased all brand-new ballot printers, and they're not waiting for the legislature to make that decision for them. And I believe that we should be doing the same here.
That's really helpful. Thank you. My second question is related My second question is related to some of the nuances, like the power going out, for instance, that nobody could predict per se. And I'm wondering, do you feel that you've addressed the various things that came up as best as one can to be in a more preventative and not a reactionary? And I'm not trying to say that the power, that no one could necessarily predict some of the things that occur, but in terms of planning, you learn, right? You learn from that. You learn from even the new equipment coming in and what's needed. And I'm wondering, from a budget perspective, will there be additional items? I don't know if a generator's needed or whatever, I'm not really sure, but I'm just speaking again to the financial impact. And do you see those purchases also be included with the equipment request?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you. I want to address the generator outage, if you don't mind first.
Sure.
The Q plan that we have, we always plan for power outage because if we don't, we're going to get caught, you know, in a bad storm. That was a perfect storm in itself because it was on a holiday when the power outage went out. Therefore, we had to call facilities and have electricians come in from home to come in, and it took, you know, a little bit of time for them to get there, but the turnaround time, by the time that we were down and back up, was about two, two and a half hours. That's not bad for having a holiday. It's a very contentious tube for the electricians because it's a life and safety process to flip that breaker. And, and I don't know enough about it, but they were telling me quite a bit, they actually came in and practiced with us before the election was over. And so it was a perfect time for that to happen. The only way that would happen any smoother is to somehow have it connected to the building, and then the building goes down and it just flips right on. And as far as I understand it, that's not how this generator that we have works. So I guess the future action would be for us to find out if that's the right type of generator, if there is an A-to-B failover that can happen that fast, but I know what we have, that doesn't happen. Addressing your second question in regards to equipment, if we do move forward with these ballot printers, it does take a lot more energy to spin up a laser jet printer and print out those ballots. So let's say that 10 people were voting all at the same time and pressed print, it could trip a 20-amp breaker. So what does that mean? These vote centers that we are looking at citing, these new ones, the new contracts, we need to ensure that they can handle the power load for voters coming in to vote. We do not want to be having power outages on election day. So to answer your question about future equipment, we may need to look over our contracts to have generators, spider generators or smaller generators to power some of this voting equipment at these locations. So that would be another request potentially coming down.
Thanks. I just, in terms of just having a background for a little bit with one of the experts in emergency management sitting in the audience, it's always best to be prepared and not react. And so prepare, 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 right? And so I'm sure that that will be incorporated not only in the mock voting, but maybe even mock disaster. And I'm sure you're thinking about that, so I just felt it important to bring that up and to understand the possible requests that might be coming and what those implications are. So I really appreciate it, and thanks to you and all your team and all your hard work, by the way. So thank you.
Thank you for my team, too, and thank you guys for your support so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your report. I'd like to go to page, I think it's 11, election integrity, elections, the Elections Group, recommendations.
Yes.
On those categories, could I get a list of those 68 categories and the 96 that were completed, and it looks like there's still about 26 recommendations that weren't completed in progress? I'd like to find out what in progress means. How, are we closer to the finish line with those or just starting with the progress? And then not started in consideration, I'd like to know what those two items are, and then no action at this time for the six recommendations. So if I could get that, you don't have to do it now, but somewhere in the near future, if you can send that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, Commissioner Clark, thank you. And also, just so you know, it is out there on the County Manager's website, but we will definitely send you a link, do whatever we need to do to get you that information quickly.
And to Commissioner Clark's point, I also can't find it. I'm looking.
I'll make sure I send that link to.
On the County Manager's website and on your website, I don't see it. So yeah, I'm not sure where the link is. That would be helpful.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Clark, do you have anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. And I have something. Some of our partners in the state bring our voting booths to schools. Do we do that?
We can do that. I don't know in Washoe County that we've done that yet. I'll have to look at folks that have been here a little longer than me. Does anybody?
I know when, and this is going to date me, when I was in Girl State and we had actually the punch ballots that we did at Girl State. So, and that was an experience to understand how that worked with no pressure because we were voting for each other for elections, so it wasn't the president. But I, I think it would be really great if we figured out a way, and I know that you and your staff are working on that, those SOPs, and we, those are the priorities. So don't let me misdirect you. But to incorporate this programming with our students, because I think that them feeling comfortable in the voting booth, understanding what that means, doing a mock election, even with government classes or however you could do it, but I think that there's a real opportunity to support ways for kids to understand how your office works and getting out there in the community. So any support that this board can provide you with that, I think that that would be a really great thing to do while you're doing, while you're preparing for the next election, if it's not too much to ask, and obviously with the permission of Manager Brown.
I love the idea. I second that. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
And especially, yeah, even the We the People classes, but even kids that aren't in these, you know, specialty programs, just all kids need to feel comfortable and understand what that mail-in ballot looks like and how that works and all of that kind of instruction. I think there's an opportunity to get them feeling, you know, confident in this system.
I think working with Adam Cersei, the COO of Washoe County Schools, we could accomplish something there, yeah.
Okay, great. That would be wonderful, and if you could just keep us posted in any way that we can support that programming.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. And with the, the new ballot system, I think that we just, if we do go in that direction, it sounds like you're pushing towards that direction, we really need to train our election workers, our volunteers, to make sure people put that ballot in the box.
That's right.
Because I am just really worried about just walking away and then their ballot not counting or, so I think that there, if we're going to adjust the system, and I understand how that could make people feel like, okay, I have a paper ballot, I'm actually casting it, perhaps that there's a, you know, way that we can do without misconceptions about that type of system. However, there, we really need to make sure that we're tightening the way that people cast it and, you know, make sure that it's done correctly.
Absolutely. Yep. We will get that training done, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? I'm not seeing anything. Okay, thank you for wanting this job, working so hard in this job, stepping up during a really difficult election season, having, you know, keeping your team happy and motivated, and however we can support you, you know, keep this commission apprised, and we appreciate you and the entire office. So thank you.
Thank you. I definitely want to say thank you for your support. You guys have been great. Manager Brown and the executive team has been fantastic. So I am proud to be a member here of the executive team, too. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we are now moving into donations. Commissioner Garcia, can we put you on the spot to help us with that?
Yes, Madam Chair. So today we have three donations going to the Human Services Agency to support children, the unhoused, and seniors in Washoe County. So those are the first three out of the four. But I wanted to highlight especially item 7B1. It's the first donation that has ever gone to Emergency Management Department, and I know Kelly, if you can walk towards the podium. This is a big donation, and $185,000 cash donation was called in from a private citizen to conduct an evacuation study for Washoe County. So I just wanted to give you the podium for a moment to talk about that.
Yes, thank you. I know we have all been talking about the importance of an evacuation study, especially in the overall process of updating our plans and ensuring that we're doing everything we can to support our communities as we grow and expand. And so huge thank you to all of you who have listened and who have helped and championed this opportunity. I think I would be remiss if I did not thank the Greg Nelson and Warren Nelson family for whom the donation comes from. So our sincerest gratitude to them for helping increase the safety in our communities.
And I caught you in the hallway, and you said this plan is not just for Washoe County unincorporated, this is now leveled up to the, the degree that now we can include the cities as well.
Yes, so the family allowed us to include the city of Sparks and the city of Reno as well in our study for a more comprehensive outcome.
So I was thrilled to hear that. With that, I make this in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much.
I'll second.
And thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And Ms. Ettraviria, I just want to pay you huge kudos and support for your presentation during our regional fire meeting, because if you hadn't done that, this donation would not have been inspired. There was someone sitting in that audience who was so inspired by the work that you're doing and wanted to see you on the ground doing that evacuation study, you know, yesterday, essentially, and wanted to support you in your work and not just trying to, you know, find it in our budget. So I just really appreciate your passion and your work because that is, it shows the inspiration that you created from that meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on that from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously, I think. Oh, yep, it's on your screen. Yes, it passes unanimously, and now.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
For the record, there was no public comment on that donation.
I didn't see any, and I should have checked in with you. Thank you. We will now move into our consent items. Do commissioners want to poll any consent items today or have questions for staff on consent? I'm not seeing that anyone does. With that, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on consent?
There is none.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no questions from the board and we've taken a public comment, I'm looking for a motion, Commissioner Andriola. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. We have a motion and a second on consent. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on your screen.
Mr. Herman.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. We'll now move into a possible block from Vice Chair Herman. Could you help us with the block vote?
There it is. I think we're on.
Okay.
All right. So, and this is in the form of a motion. Number nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, 19, and 20.
Thank you very much. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. We have a motion from the vice chair and a second from Commissioner Garcia. Madam Chair, is there any public comment on those items? Or, excuse me, Madam Clerk?
There is no public comment on any of those items.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the block from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And I'm not hearing any, and waiting for it to pop up here. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We're now going to move into item 14, Manager Brown.
Item 14 is a direction to staff regarding the potential disposition of 10 Kerman Avenue or Assessor's Parcel Number 12-150-12, a property previously identified as surplus to Washoe County needs at the Board of County Commission meeting on August 22, 2023. Based on the Board of County Commissioner direction in May of 2024, staff is recommending sale by direct negotiation with Renown Health for economic development purposes in the amount of $750,000 after adoption of a separate resolution finding that it is in the public interest, it is in the best interest of the public to sell the property without offering the property to the public and potentially for less than fair market value as prescribed in Nevada state law. Renown Health plans to use the property to expand its healthcare services, which will create highly skilled jobs and enhance the quality of healthcare available to the community.
Thank you very much. And it looks like we have a staff presentation. Welcome, Mr. Solaro.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. For the record, Dave Solaro, Assistant County Manager. As Manager Brown mentioned, the item before you has come a couple of times with this board, most recently in May of 2024. This is specific to the sale of property located on the southeast corner of Second Street and Kerman Avenue, which is approximately 70% vacant. The additional 30% is currently occupied by the Northern Nevada Public Health TB Clinic. And as you are aware, that they are in the process of constructing a new facility on the southeast corner of Ninth Street in Sutro, just down the street here. So at the May meeting, the board provided direction to staff to negotiate directly with Renown Health to determine, to determine if we could come to agreement on a suitable sale price under the Nevada state law provision allowing for direct sale for economic development purposes. Part of the negotiations included Renown Health completing their strategic planning in October of 2024, as well as Washoe County completing two separate appraisals as outlined in Nevada state law. As identified in the staff report, two appraisals were completed, and the appraisal numbers varied widely from $860,000 to $2.6 million. And so, you know, staff also reviewed the letter provided by Renown Health to Manager Brown, which is attached to the staff report, just outlining some of the benefits that they bring to the community with alignment of our strategic plan, most notably our, the services they provide to our vulnerable populations, and also assisting in creating an overall healthy community. So due to the size of the parcel, just a half an acre, as well as the building condition score of .39 or critically poor in the Washoe County system, staff is comfortable with the negotiated price of $750,000 and would recommend the direct sale to Renown Health. Additionally, since this is one-time funding for the sale of a community asset, we would appreciate direction on the use of the funds from the commission. Staff would recommend use of the funds to be utilized for improvements to other community assets, directly in alignment of the Washoe County strategic plan, as an example, would be to potentially utilize, as suggested by Commissioner Clark actually back in 2023, for improvements potentially for the recently purchased West Hills property. So with that, I would turn this back, I'm back over to the board and also let you know that Renown Health is here in case you have any specific questions for them. That is what I have for you today.
Thank you very much. Before we open up public comment, which I'm sure Renown has signed in for, I wanted to see if there's any board comments or questions. Vice Chair Herman?
I would say, we've talked about this for a very long time, and I, I am, I am willing to make a motion as soon as it's possible.
Okay, yay. All right, I will call on you first. Thank you. And Commissioner, okay. Okay, and Commissioner Andriola, Commissioner Clark?
I've been a vocal proponent of selling this property forever. The values in the land, there's virtually no value in that building, it's beyond its economic life and lots of other reasons. But all I can say is I hope that when I want to be, buy a piece of property from the county, I get this kind of preferential treatment. I mean, we've got values of between 800-plus, plus up to 2 million, and we're going to sell it at this amount. The question, my thoughts are, and my question is, are we really serving the taxpayers with the belt tightening that we're doing here and the economic forecast of things not being, going to be as strong as they have been, and yet we're going to sell this property at, I think, a severe discount? So the other issue is, you know, selling it to one entity versus putting it on the open market, that's another concern for mine. But, you know, as soon as we get rid of this place, the better. That being said, I'm just not happy with the price. Thank you.
Well, I'm sure once you run a nonprofit hospital that serves a region, we could have a deal with you, Commissioner Clark. But I'm looking to Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
Nobody has signed in.
Okay. Any other Commissioner comments before we move on? Vice Chair Herman?
So moved.
Okay, looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chair Herman, a second by Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on that from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. And next up, we have item 15. And I look back to Mr. Solaro if you want to give us any other background on item 15.
Madam Chair, should I read item 15 into the.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Brown.
Item 15 is to authorize the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners to execute a resolution of intent of the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners to sell real property located at 10 Kerman Avenue, Reno, Nevada, Assessor's Parcel Number 12-150-12 as surplus to the needs of Washoe County for economic development purposes at a price less than appraised value to Renown Health, who plans to use the property to expand its healthcare services, which will create highly skilled jobs and enhance the quality of healthcare available to the community and matters property related thereto, setting the date of March 11, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. to allow for any objections to this action. Mr. Solaro.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Again, for the record, Dave Solaro, Assistant County Manager. As the manager mentioned, this is a requirement of Nevada state law to sell the property in the way determined in the previous item. So we will have to have a public hearing to hear any objections from the public based on your action. One item I will clarify in this item that maybe is relevant to the other one, but we'll come back before you with the public hearing is the location for the expense of the funds. And so I'm assuming that the West Hills project, based on the motion, is the right place. So that will be contained in that staff report. So it'll be cleared up for sure on the 11th of March.
Thank you very much for the clarification on that. Okay. Well, I don't know if Vice Chair Herman wants to also make a motion on this item.
I can say so moved again.
Okay. And I will take it after. May I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, thank you. And may I have public comment, Madam Clerk?
There's nobody signed in.
Okay. We have a motion by the vice chair and a second by Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on the motion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on your screen. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll now move into item 16, Manager Brown.
Item 16 is a discussion and possible adoption of the proposed Board of Commissioners Rules of Procedure to be effective upon approval. The proposal of the rules is to provide parliamentary authority and to establish supplemental rules of procedure for the conduct of county commission meetings and individual commission members, where such rules are consistent with the laws of the state of Nevada. The proposed rules of procedure have been reviewed and reorganized to reflect the current practices of the board. The proposed rules include, but are not limited to, changes clarifying use of rules and applicability of Robert's Rules of Order, Articles 1 through 4, Preparation of Agenda, Article 5, Rule of Manager, Role of Manager and Chair in Agenda Preparation, Article 5.4, Placement of Items on Agendas, Article 5.4.2, Order of Business, Article 5.4.3, Consent Agenda Parameters, Article 5.5, Requests by Commissioners for Agenda Items, Article 5.7, Requests of Staff by Commissioners, Article 5.8, Attendance, Virtual Attendance of Meetings, Article 6.1.2, Reconsideration of Meeting Votes, Article 6.7, Communications by Commissioners and Adherence to the Code of Conduct, Article 7, and Adherence by Citizen Appointees to Code of Conduct, Article 8.2.3. Commissioners may propose other amendments.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank DA Kanderas, who has been working on this for our board for quite a long time. Actually, this has been a long time coming to us. So thank you for all your work. I look to the board on questions or comments. So I'll start with Vice Chair Herman. Do you have anything? No? And Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, the Article 7, Commissioner Conduct and Communications was really my priority last year. Thank you, Kanderas, for all your work last year. I think that was an important move for our body to hold the same degree of accountability and expectation of respect and civility as our staff and as our other appointees do. So I think that was really important language that was added to the Washoe County Code of Conduct, but I'm comfortable with all of the other changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Andriola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you would indulge me, I have several.
That's great.
Thank you. The first I have is Section 5.7.1. It's actually under the heading Request for Agenda Items by Commissioners. In reviewing this in great deal, I mean, really reviewing every word and looking at the spirit of consistency, I would like to recommend for consideration that we add and to the presiding officer after written request to the county manager and to the presiding officer. That ensures consistency with the other provisions throughout this document. So that's.
That's the first one?
That's, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, we're ready. That's what we're here for. Thank you for coming prepared.
Of course. On subsection 5.8.2, under request by staff timed by commissioners, I certainly understand the importance of designating the four hours in 5.8.1 and then less than four hours of 5.8.2, but I would like to ask for consideration that we remove the Commissioner Support Team exemption from this requirement on the basis of consistency and practice where the county manager is responsible for directing and organizing and delegating for efficiency. So that's really a process that I think could be removed for consideration. May I go on? On subsection 6.7.1, that is the heading of reconsideration. Item 6.7.1 and 6.7.2 really need to have an and because it can't stand alone in terms of legality of compliance with one or the other. In other words, a request to reconsider shall be made only during the meeting at which the action on the item was taken or at the next regularly scheduled meeting, and that the request must be made by a commissioner who voted on the prevailing side.
Oh, yeah.
So those two are conditions that I would like to ask for recommendation to be considered. I'm almost done.
You're fine.
Section 7.6 reads Commissioners may go through elected officials with any requests in their jurisdiction. And being that we're Washoe County, I'm asking for consideration where it would read Commissioners may go through Washoe County elected officials in their jurisdiction. So that's just a, again, consideration that I'd like to make. On 7.8.3, in the spirit of how 7.9 is written in many other places, I would like to recommend that Commissioners shall advise the presiding officer. That, again, has the spirit of how this is written. And again, I'd like to echo the Chair's point about Ms. Kanderas, who has done an immense amount of work on this. But again, just looking at it, I think it speaks to consistency. On 7.9, Commissioner Correspondence, again, it states, "When a Commissioner sends out correspondence stating his or her official position regarding a constituent complaint or other county issues, a copy of said correspondence, either paper or electronic, shall be provided to the county manager." And I, again, in the spirit of consistency, would ask that it include the presiding officer as well. I'm almost done.
You're fine.
And I'm sure you're happy to hear my last recommendation for consideration is actually the last item, Article 11 for amendments. These rules may be amended from time to time as needed. Requests for amendments shall be made to the manager in writing. Proposed amendments shall be presented to the board at a meeting for consideration and approval in accordance with commission agenda preparation. And I would just like to call that out for clarity and compliance. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I look to DA Kanderas to see if you have any concerns legally on any of these changes that Commissioner Andriola has brought to us.
No, I think those are all fine. I have a, everybody has their own colored pen for changes that I was keeping track of. So I think the only thing I would say with that Article 11, I think I'll put it in accordance with Article 5.
Okay.
And, and I did, if it's okay before the, before Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Addresses, I did want to say that, I don't know, I think I just lost my train of thought.
That's okay.
Oh, boy. Okay, then just go ahead.
Okay, but you don't have major concerns. And I didn't see any problems with those recommendations.
Yeah, I would consider those all just minor. Oh, I did, I know what it was. I wanted to say that ADA Edwards assisted on, or on helping me with this.
Oh, yes, of course. Thank you for giving credit to your coworker. That's wonderful. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The comment I made earlier I'd like to be considered is, as far as truthfulness and accuracy and correct information when, when any of the commissioners speak, especially the chair speaks for the county, in particular that issue with the homelessness reduction by 40%, when it doesn't appear that that's the case. So when, when we say things, whether I'm on the dais, whether you're on the dais, whoever on the dais, when someone hears something that's inaccurate and they find out later that it was inaccurate, it kind of tarnishes the reputation of the county. So that's, that's what I'm worried about. So those are my thoughts. If we're going to make any changes, I'd like to make sure we have complete accuracy. And whoever prepared that, that information should be, I should apologize for, for giving information out to the public that was inaccurate. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe you can work with DA Kanderas as to where that.
Sure.
Should go. And yes, I think it should be applicable to all commissioners as well in being accurate and telling the truth.
Code of Conduct.
And transparency. Okay. Any other Commissioner comments or questions on this? And any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There's nobody signed in.
Okay. And so with those changes, I'm comfortable with Commissioner Andriola's changes. I guess if there was a motion, it would include the changes from Commissioner Andriola. And then I think as far as the request from Commissioner Clark, DA Kanderas, would that come back in another form to us? How do you imagine this?
Well, let me, I will say first of all, that the Washoe County Code of Conduct, which is made applicable to the commissioners via this, you're, once you enact the rules, does have a section for honesty in there. So if you're, if there's a misrepresentation or such, it would be, it's against the Code of Conduct. So, and basically, these are internal, this is an internal document for your use. So I'm not, so it's not intended to, like, if there was a violation, I say that with quotes, of these rules, it doesn't necessarily create any kind of punitive action. The action would be, and for Commissioner Clark, the action would be to make a complaint that the Code of Conduct was violated because that document is actually con, it actually applies to everybody. So that's, they're kind of a little bit different that way. But let me look at the wording and see if we can maybe, of this document, of the rules, and see if we can maybe tighten it up and get some of the spirit. But so for now, what I would do is just ask that it be approved with the changes. Then it'll, I'll make the changes, but it'll become effective. And then if we have another change, we'll, we'll bring in, we'll bring in another item.
Okay. And so the updated rules will then be on our website after this motion is made.
As soon as, well, as soon as.
Immediately. No, obviously. There's work to be done. But yes, as soon as the changes are done.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Commissioner Andriola, if she could provide just an overview on item 5.8, Requests of Staff Time by the Commissioners, I heard her say that she wanted to remove the Commission Support Team as exempt from this requirement. Were there any other changes to the 5.8.2?
No.
Okay. It's just the omission of that last sentence?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
All right.
And with that, Madam Chair, unless there's any other discussion or any other recommended changes.
Not seeing any.
I'll move to support the changes that were redlined and then the additional changes that were recommended. And the Code of Conduct also included for clarification that there is already that cited, as Ms. Kanderas explained.
Thank you. We have a motion. I am looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, with a motion from Commissioner Andriola and a second from Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on this item from the board? I'm seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on your screen. And that motion passes four to one with Commissioner Clark in abstention, or with Commissioner Clark with a no vote. All right. Now we are moving on to item 21, Manager Brown.
Item 21 is a discussion and direction to staff regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed by legislators by Washoe County or by other entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to submit bill draft requests or such legislative issues as may be deemed by the Chair of the Board to be of critical significance to the county. Pending legislative bills are located on the county website. Current bills the county is tracking may be reported on or discussed are listed under Government Affairs at the, at the indicated website address. Due to time constraints inherent in the legislative process, a list of specific bills that staff will seek direction from the commission on during this item will be posted on the website under Government Affairs. Due to the rapid pace of legislative session, additional bills upon which comment may be sought from the Board of County Commissioners will be posted as soon as known. Madam Chair, we're in the heat of the legislative session, and as a result of that, Ms. Matievich has indicated she can't be with us today. I was hoping that if the board has any comments on her last, her most recent report that you would like considered or answers to, we can certainly take that back to her when she becomes available.
Thank you very much. And I am looking to the board. Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything? Okay. Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Andriola? Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to reiterate the message I gave earlier. I'm against, and personally against AB 51. Anything that limits public, public records or distribution of public records, I'm against. By the very name, public records are public records. They should be available to the public. The taxpayers have paid for staff and people to record this information and, and the clerk and the recorder and everybody else that's involved with, with keeping public records, public, are all, all paid for by the taxpayer. And the taxpayer and the media and all citizens should have the right to ask for just about anything, maybe some HR issues and maybe some things that are sensitive. But other than that, and who determines sensitivity, I'm talking about social security numbers or addresses of places that shouldn't be out there, or maybe judges or law enforcement addresses, those types of things are what I'm referring to. But in a general rule, I'm all for public records. I think public records are exactly what the name implies, public records. It should be made easier to get instead of more restrictive. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board comments? I'm not seeing any. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
There is none.
Okay. With that, we will take a, unless there's any other board comments, we will take a break and come back to our public hearings at 1:30. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We're moving a little slower today, but we'll see you at 1:30 for the public hearing. hearing. Okay, it is 1:30, and I will call back to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting, and we will now start with our public hearings. Item number 22, Manager Brown?
Item 22 is a public hearing regulatory zone amendment, case number WRZA 24-0007, Galena Creek School. Consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation to adopt an amendment to the Forest Regulatory Zone map to change the regulatory zone on a one-acre parcel, APN 45-472-28, from low-density suburban to parks and recreation. And if approved, authorize the Chair to sign a resolution to this effect. The site is located at 16,000 Callahan Road and owned by Washoe County, the Board of, Washoe County. The Board of County Commissioners may adopt the proposed amendment, may adopt the proposed amendment with modifications, or may deny the proposed amendment after the public hearing. If the Board denies a proposed amendment, the reasons for the denial, which findings cannot be made, shall either be stated in the motion or, or discussed on the record by the individual Board members.
Thank you very much. And I look to the Board to see if you would like a staff presentation on this item. I'm not seeing anyone who needs to see a staff presentation on this item. Okay, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
There is nobody signed in.
Okay, looking to Board discussion. Is there any discussion, Commissioner Andriola?
No discussion.
Okay. Are you signing in for a motion?
I am.
Okay, wonderful. I'm, I'm throwing it back to you for a motion.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Thank you so much. Looking for a second? Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, with a motion and a second. Any questions from the Board on that? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll now move into item 23, Manager Brown?
Item 23 is a public hearing, appeal of the Washoe County Planning Commission's approval of regulatory zone amendment case number, WRZA 24-0003, which seeks to amend the North Valley's regulatory zone map to change the regulatory zone on two parcels from 169.91 acres of low-density suburban to 163.92 acres of medium-density suburban and 5.99 acres of open space. The applicant and property owner is Silver Sky Ranch LLC. The addresses of the parcels are 10235 White Owl Drive and 12,000 Red Rock Road Reno. The assessed parcel numbers are 086-251-81 and 086-250-01. The applicant is Ross Earl, who lists his address at 11400 Osage, Osage Road, Osage Road. The applicant also filed an appeal to preserve their rights to judicial review. The Board of County Commissioners shall consider their appeals based on the record and any testimony and material submitted at the public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners may affirm or reverse the Planning Commission's decision. If the Board affirms the Planning Commission's decision, it may adopt the request of regulatory zone amendment. If adopted, the Board shall authorize the Chair to sign a resolution to this effect.
Thank you very much. And I think we would like a staff presentation on this, so welcome.
Tim Evans, Planner. So the case before you today, or the appeal before you today, is for regulatory zone amendment WRZA 24-003 for White Owl Drive and Red Rock Road. So the Planning Commission initially heard, or heard this project on December 3, 2024, and the Planning Commission approved the regulatory zone amendment, being able to make all six findings that are required under Washoe County Code. And after the approval on December 3, 2024, on December 13, two appeals were filed. One was from the, from a neighboring property owner, Russ Earl, with the reasons being alleged for the appeal that the findings within Washoe County Code could not be made. And the applicant for the regulatory zone amendment also filed an appeal, which is Silver Sky Ranch LLC, to preserve their right for judicial review. So to give some background on the subject parcels, the subject parcels total approximately 169.91 acres. The parcels to the north of the subject properties are developed with single-family dwellings. The properties to the east of the subject properties are developed with single-family dwellings as well. And to the south is a portion, or 190-acre portion of the Silver Hills development. And to the west of the subject properties is Bureau of Land Management land and developed single-family dwellings. And the subject properties are located within the North Valley's planning area and are zoned medium-density suburban. So the request before you is to change regulatory zone on those two parcels totaling 169.91 acres to of low-density, excuse me, to correct the, the last slide. There was a typo. It is not MDS that it's currently zoned, it's zoned LDS. So a correction to that, my apologies. So the zoning would be changed from LDS, low-density suburban, to MDS, medium-density suburban. And so as a result of that change, the density that would be allowed on that, those two subject properties would be going from 169 dwelling units that could be potentially allowed with that, the current zoning, to 489 dwelling units. And I want to make it clear that the regulatory zone amendment itself is just to change the zoning. This application that is before you is not for a subdivision. That would be a completely different, separate process. And it would also have public hearings and, and other things like that. So this is not approving a subdivision, this is just changing the zoning. So on the screen there is the existing and proposed zoning. So as mentioned earlier, the existing zoning is LDS, low-density suburban, and the proposed zoning is MDS with a 50-foot open space buffer along the north and east portions of the properties. And the reason for that is to give a buffer in between the existing parcels that are smaller in size, or larger in size, to the potential higher density. So that, that way there's this 50-foot open space buffer, that there would be no building or anything like that allowed within that area. So the regulatory zone amendment was sent out for review to multiple agencies and departments, one being engineering. Engineering provided comment stating that traffic and roadways would be addressed at the time of future development application. So that would be something similar to like a tentative map application for a subdivision. And power would be provided to the subject parcels by NV Energy. The project application was sent to Truckee Meadows Water Authority for review as well, and they provided comments stating that the subject properties would need to be annexed into Tommao's retail service area and have to obtain available water rights through Tommao. And so the project information was also provided to, excuse me, the City of Reno for review as well. And they provided comments stating that sewer service could be provided by the Reno Sted Water, wastewater treatment facility, and that there is current remaining capacity and the facility itself is being expanded. And the project information was also sent to Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District for review, and that those subject parcels would be served by the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. And one thing to note is that there are two fire stations nearby, and it's approximately just over five miles from the subject parcels. So response times per Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District would be between eight and 12 minutes, somewhere in there. And so the following findings, as shown on the screen, were able to be made by the Planning Commission. And the Board may take one of the following actions. Deny Russ Earl's appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's decision. Or two, grant Russ Earl's appeal and reverse the Planning Commission's decision. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant and appellant both have presentations as well.
Great. Thank you so much. And per our protocol, we will have the appellant come up and do a presentation for 10 minutes, and then the applicant will also have 10 minutes for a presentation. We'll discuss, and then open it up to public comment and discuss and make a decision. Welcome, Mr.?
Russ Earl.
Yes.
I thought we had 15 minutes from what I was told, but it's 10 now, huh?
I'm sorry. It's always been 10. It's, I've never, we've never had 15, at least while I've been on this board.
Hold on to your chairs. This is going to be quick.
And we all did receive, well, I reset your packet certainly on my desk.
All of you received this packet. So first off, let's go to the next slide. All right. Surrounding, the surrounding Silver Knolls parcels, this is a correction to previous notes that were provided by the Planning Commission, and some clarifications. The surrounding Silver Knolls parcels to the west, north, and east of the proposed change actually average eight-plus acres each and not one acre each. If we could use the Limu for a second here. That has to go face down, is it? Nope, face up. Okay. And with that, you can see that's the parcel that they're talking about, and around it are the surrounding Silver Knolls, and those average eight acres. Back to the presentation, please. Staff comments say that additional housing is needed, but no, make no mention of the already approved 9,100 dwelling units approved for the Red Rock Road in the area of Silver Hills, Silver Star, and Evans Ranch planned communities, that the applicant is either the full-interested developer or a partner therein, and that's in about a four-mile area on Red Rock Road, 9,100 dwelling units. Planning states that the proposal is in compliance with the master plan, when in fact it is in direct violation of Sections NV 1.5 of the master plan, North Valley's area plan that does not allow MDS in the Silver Knoll suburban character management area. There is no mention in the presentation that the proposed area is in a high severity wild urban interface zone. wild urban interface zone, per the Community Services Department, and the other portions of Silver Knolls are medium. By increasing this density, we then would probably, more than likely, I was a professional firefighter for 15 years, we would increase the risks to the surrounding Silver Knolls community. There is no mention in their report that there is a proposed hazardous material manufacturing facility, the Leighton Gigafactory, within sight of the proposed density increase. If we could use the overhead, please. And that is the RGJ article about that, and the Leighton Factory just got $650 million in funding to push forward, and they've just signed contracts with the ports of Stockton and LA to move their sulfur up to Reno. Next page to the Corrections and Clarifications page. Applicant's traffic study only looks at this single increase in density, not the already approved 9,100 dwelling units and the cumulative impact on Red Rock Road. We had a, and let's go to the overhead, please. There was a study done in 2019 that looked at all three of the already approved, can we use the overhead, please? Overhead, please.
There it is.
Okay. That was done in 2019, at the time Silver Hills was approved. It showed that Red Rock Road congestion will worsen with the 2,000 residents of Silver Lake may become increasingly isolated from fire, ambulance, and other emergency services. Also shows that cumulatively, if you look at all of those developments put together with 9,100 homes, once Evans Ranch and Silver Star and Silver Hills are made, will be to a level of service of F on Red Rock Road, and that's even with expanding it to four lanes. Back to the presentation, please. Okay, this request does not match the applicant's already-approved Silver Hills East land-use plan that is slated for one dwelling unit per acre to match the surrounding Silver Hills community. Let's go back to the overhead, please. And this is out of their own proposed plan, and it shows in this area here, all those are one acre per home dwelling unit, and the proposed area that they're wanting to increase density on is up in that area. So it doesn't even make sense with their previous requests on their already-approved Silver Hills plan. Back to the presentation, please. The applicant states that 6,840 new dwelling units are needed in unincorporated Washoe County by 2042, which is correct, but the Red Rock Road already has 9,100-plus dwelling units approved, far exceeding the projected need and making the request absolutely unnecessary and detrimental to the Silver Knolls community. RTC improvements to widen Moya Boulevard from Red Rock to Echo are now delayed in a timeframe from 2025 to 2034. If we could look at the overhead quickly. This was the most recent RTC draft that was just put out this January. It is showing that many of the projects that the Planning Commission approved this predicated on are now pushed out to a later timeline. That includes the 395 improvement between Stead Boulevard and Red Rock is now in the 2035 to 2050, and that's an unfunded project. We have the Moya Boulevard capacity, which is Red Rock to Echo, is now potentially in the 25 to 34 timeframe. North Virginia Street has also been pushed back. Projects that are from 2035 to 2050, that shows the Red Rock Road interchange, the Stead interchange, the Lear Boulevard extension, the Lemon Drive extension to Red Rock Road, and the Red Rock widening are all pushed from 2035 to 2050. So we will have no improvements in our traffic until potentially 25 years from now. And this also shows the unfunded projects by NDOT being the 395 widening north of Stead to Red Rock and the Cold Springs to Red Rock connector. Back to the presentation, please. Noninheritance defining: Consistent with the master plan, the request does not adhere or follow the master plan, North Valley's area plan, Silver Knoll suburban character management area, Section 1, NV 1.5, allowing, and it does not allow, this density of more than one per acre. Compatible land use: Increasing density would have an adverse effect on community safety and welfare, with an increased fire potential and an increased strain on already sparse emergency services. Higher-density housing leads to less defensible space and distance between homes, resulting in a higher fire load in a smaller area, increasing the fire risk in an already high wild urban face zone. Just look at Altadena, California, last month, when it fired, jumped from house to house with no problem. Stormwater runoff and flooding: Converting approximately 165 acres into non-permeable surfaces would increase the runoff from the site, potentially adversely affecting Silver Knolls residents. Additionally, the increased runoff would end up in Silver Lake, raising the flooding to surrounding commercial buildings like Urban Outfitters and to Red Rock itself and flooding that area. Response to changing conditions: More desirable use. There have been no changes in conditions, seeing that the needed project housing are already met with the 9,100 approved homes on Red Rock alone. That's almost 50% greater than what the applicant's own presentation showed. The chance, change to higher-density housing would not be advisable with the proposed hazardous materials lithium sulfur battery Gigafactory to be built at the Stead Airport, and that's within sight of this project. Adding, tripling your threat of, to the people that live there and increasing the density just does not seem prudent or smart when we have a hazardous materials manufacturing facility being put in. And I don't think anybody's going to stop that. That has everybody in Washington's approval at this point. Next page, number four, please. One more? Okay. Water availability infrastructure is not available and miles away at this time. At Stead wastewater treatment facility, they have said that there is 1,100 connections available, but we have 9,100 approved housing units. So do the math on that one, that's not going to work. They're going to have to build another sewer treatment plan at some point, and the state says that takes seven to 10 years to get permitted, planned, and implemented. Law enforcement is already taxed to the limit, as many, Manning for the Washoe County Sheriff's Office has not been increased in over 20 years, but population has doubled, resulting in Code 3 responses, well over 30 minutes to Red Rock, and I have experienced that personally. I know that to be the fact. Delayed fire EMS response to the Silver Knolls community is already well over the desired eight-minute response, as stipulated by the NFPA, with the best response being 12 to 18 minutes from Station 44, if it is available, and if they have to come from Cold Springs or Sun Valley, it can be 25 minutes. I just had a Code 3 response to my house last week. I laid on the ice for 18 minutes, so. Lack of ability and facilities: Public transportation is non-existent on Red Rock Road. Traffic is, let's, not here, it's, yep. Traffic is routinely gridlocked on 395 in North Virginia. We only have one way in and one way out of the North Valley, making it very dangerous and impossible during an emergency evacuation. As I showed you, the RTC's changes don't show any improvement to our roads. As we showed you, we'll have a level of, let's go to the next slide, please. Red Rock Road showed you that we're going to be in a Level F on that. Let's go to the next one, please. Let's go to number five. If passed, the increase in density will have an adverse effect on the Silver Knolls community by not adhering to the mandated master plan, North Valley's Section 1.5. It is not, let's go to the next one, six, please. Looks like I'm going to run out of time on that. So you've all seen this, and I hope you had a chance to digest it. Lots of information, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And now we will hear from the applicant.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. For the record, Garrett Gordon, today representing Lifestyle Homes. With me today is three generations of listeners. I have Dustin Listener, Bob Listener, and Peter Listener, and I'll be presenting on behalf of the applicant when my presentation pops up. I know the timer's already started, but just waiting for my presentation. Maybe we could reset the timer?
Oh yeah, let's stop the timer and restart it. Or actually, I think you already spoke, so you have to stop the timer.
Perfect, thank you. Again, for the record, Garrett Gordon, representing the property owner and applicant. As you heard, the Planning Commission approved this application, and why did they do so? So you can see, first of all, this is a change, as you've heard from staff and the appellant, to move from low-density suburban to medium-density suburban with that open-space buffer, which is critical. The 50 feet on the north and east sides of the property is a great transition or buffer area for the compatibility finding that we'll discuss a little later. I think it's also important, and I'm not asking for a master plan amendment today. The master plan is currently on the property, and what does it allow? It certainly allows medium-density suburban, which is a modest three units per acre, but it also allows high-density suburban, seven units per acre. So we feel like this was the in-between. We're at one unit per acre, we're not asking to go to seven, that the master plan would allow, but a middle ground of three units per acre to provide some more housing in the county and in this area. I'm glad the appellant showed this slide, because I did show that the Planning Commission, so our property is directly south of the yellow on the right, our property is directly north of the property on the right. This is Silver Hills, and you can see, when we work with staff, we've already created a pattern of this open-space buffer that runs along the east side of the property to create that buffer, that transition from the one unit per acre to the three. And I also argue that the appellant and the HOA filed litigation over Silver Hills when this body approved it, and the judge confirmed that the compatibility finding was made with that 50-foot buffer. So you can see, we took that 50-foot buffer and just extended it from Silver Hills northbound to provide that transition on the east-side properties and then also on the north side of the property. So it's definitely compatible and definitely flows very nicely on the east side of Red Rock as far as the compatibility. Traffic, you heard from the appellant, there were some concerns. So the first three bullet points from our traffic engineer, supported by your county engineer, that under baseline plus project conditions, the road rage segments are anticipated to operate within level of service policy. Number two, anticipated to operate within level of service thresholds. Three, regional road improvements on Red Rock will be adequate to carry Silver Hills plus any traffic generated by this amendment. So again, this is zoning, this is preliminary review, our traffic engineer said no problem, as did your county engineer, but maybe most importantly is bullet point number four that says this is only a zone change, right? We would have to come back to you, and this body would have to approve a tentative map. That's when we identify the exact number of lots and also a traffic impact study. So I don't disagree that the appellant mentions that there's traffic, other projects and timing of traffic improvements, but today's not the day to discuss that. It's when we actually come to you with a project with a number of units, multiply it by the number of trips, and then do the math to see if it works. And your county engineering staff agrees with that statement. So let me focus on the findings, given this is an appeal by the appellant. So master plan, this is absolutely in substantial compliance with the master plan, your Planning Commission agrees. Two bullet points are, the uses are shifting from a rural residential to a medium-density residential, demonstrating North Valley's varying needs. So you have one unit per acre on the west side, we have our open-space buffer, and we transition to three, a very nice transition, not one to seven, that I could be arguing for under your master plan, but one to three. Also, direct development of residential densities greater than one unit per five acres in the TMSA, where it can utilize planned, local, and regional infrastructure. We have infrastructure right here, and I'd also note, increasing this density coupled with the Silver Hills density will allow us to spread the cost over a larger number of units for our infrastructure. So in other words, when we bring water and sewer from the airport, rather than dividing that, using the math and dividing that cost by only Silver Hills lots, now you're dividing it by these lots. What does that do for lifestyle? It allows them to lower their price point, right? Their niche, their wheelhouse is entry-level housing. They try to keep housing as low as possible for entry-level buyers. By allowing us to add this density and help subsidize the ability to bring the infrastructure here, it's a win-win for everyone, so very important. Compatibility. You heard from the Planning Commission, they agreed with compatibility. Our specific plan is just south of this, 680 units, that also has that 50-foot buffer. Two, not only that open space, a regulatory zone is important, and that 50-foot buffer, because there was a thought of just allowing not just some open space there in our tentative map, but I give your staff credit, they said, no, we want you to zone it. We want to make sure it's absolutely zoned, open space, so those if, ands, or buts, that it would provide that buffer. So compatibility is certainly met with that buffer. In addition, I think this is important, this application went to Public Health, Truckee Meadows Fire, the Sheriff's Office, Engineering, Northern Nevada Public Health provided no comment, they had no concerns. The Sheriff's Office and County Engineering responded with no comment, i.e. no concerns, and Truckee Meadows Fire said the project shall meet and comply with all of their requirements. Absolutely, we will, and when the tentative map comes before you, we have obligation, a legal obligation, to show you how we meet all fire code ordinance and standards, wish we will. So all your agencies and departments have no concerns with this application whatsoever. As far as change conditions, so the amendment has the potential to increase the availability of housing in the area, which is needed and desired by the Washoe County Master Plan, and is complies with the regional plan as well. Your 2022 consensus forecast, the appellant mentioned this, anticipates that the unincorporated county will need to absorb up to over 16,000-person population until 2042. This needs to increase the housing supply by 6,840 dwelling units. Obviously, we're not asking for a 6,000-unit development, we're doing our little piece of this puzzle for a modest increase to three units per acre. I'd also note change conditions, and this is a big deal, what's going on at your Stead Airport. So Dermody Properties has a development agreement with the airport to develop the Reno Logistics Park. It consists of over, almost 3,000 acres of development for construction, operation, maintenance of office buildings, flex office space, commercial, residential, roadways, parking areas, curbs, gutters, a complete development of Stead Airport, which makes sense, because look here, you can see this site, Red Rock, between Red Rock and the airport, is surrounded by kind of industrial manufacturing and businesses. But what you notice here, it's lacking the housing, as is the airport plan, has commercial, office park, green space, but there's no residential. So Lifestyle believes that increasing this density will be able to provide this entry-level housing, this niche, to the workers out there, which, what does it do? The reverse commute, it keeps people off the major roadways and allows them to commute between Red Rock, Osage, and the airport. So no residential planned by the airport, we think we're providing that piece of the puzzle to make sure it's successful. And you can see, I'm not only standing here saying, oh, this project at the airport will eventually come, it's currently under construction. Right now, there's over a million square feet under construction of warehouse, industrial space, that again, this MDS would allow for some housing for this employment, for these employees. Change conditions, also, the roads are coming and have come. Levin Drive between Sky Vista and Military Road is going to be widened to four to six lanes. I just looked up Moya, it's on the RTC website, front page, which talks about that's under construction, or will be under construction and completed in 2027. So all this is happening at the same time, airport construction, roadways, along with some housing that is needed in the area. Facilities, your staff, right from your engineering staff, says that the Reno Stead wastewater treatment facility, expanded, existing, though, has over 1,000 residential units. Our increase certainly falls under that cap. Obviously, I'd have to come back to you with a tentative map and still prove to you that we're under that cap. That's a conversation for a different day, but as of now, there's capacity, and we feel comfortable when we move forward with a map, there will be. But if I'm before you and there's no capacity, there's clearly no project. Will not adversely affect implementation of policies, staff says. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact implementation of policies and action programs of Washoe County Master Plan, per the analysis by your staff. And again, desired pattern of growth, we talked about your consensus, what the growth projections are, this housing will help with that. And I'm glad the appellant used my slide in his presentation that I ended with at the Planning Commission, very exciting. The Stead Airport is already under construction, but we already have a commitment through efforts with EDON, that this Leighton Company will invest more than $1 billion into this project, over 125-acre campus out there, this is a real thing, and you can see I highlighted increased staffing to over 1,000 employees. These employees are going to have retail, they're going to have commercial, they're not going to have housing. And so we think, Lifestyle Homes believes they can provide that niche of entry-level housing that work, that will work, and that is definitely compatible with the wages they make there with a housing product that's in the area. And with that, Madam Chair, I appreciate your input and will happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And I look to the Board on discussion or questions for staff or the applicant or the appellant.
This is quite a...
This is quite a, quite a problem here for the people that live in that area. Now, we've got, just the factory is going to cause quite a bit of turmoil. Looking at the history of this kind of, kind of operation. Heard a lot of wisdom from people that have experienced it. And I tend to support the appellant in this case. So the fact that this development with the lack of available sewer and all that, I just tend to support the appeal of Mr. Earl and his neighbors. I'd like to hear from some of the neighbors.
Okay, okay. And they are signed in for public comment. So I'll give the commission a pass here and then we'll do public comment. Commissioner Garcia? Okay. Commissioner Andrea and Commissioner Clark? Okay. Then Madam Clerk, if you could help us with public comment.
Howard Owens?
Hi, I spoke this morning. My name's Howard Owens and I live off of Red Rock on Placerville. And everybody makes a big deal about the planning commission passing this, but it was a three-to-two vote. It was a very close vote, including the chair voted against it for reasons that have already been put forward. The infrastructure is not in place. Sewer, water, they're saying one to three years maybe. And the houses that are approved, the sewer can handle 1,081 new houses. Silver, this initiative is for 872 new units. And the map on Mr. Evans' 50-page presentation on page 45, it shows a total of 12,274 lots have been approved. And that's a lot. And water is going to be an issue. And they talk about how infrastructure is very expensive and it's advantageous to spread the cost of the infrastructure to additional units, which is going to include the people that already live there, that are unwell and septic. They're going to be forced to move to city water and city sewer when it's available or if it's available. And a lot of folks are retired on fixed income and that's going to be very expensive on them as well. And so according to you guys, the county commissioner, the financial outlook for Washoe County is showing signs of flat growth, not increased growth. And there was recently, on Omaha Street and Western, the rezoning map was for three units per acre. It was recently changed to eight units per acre. And once you get their foot in the door, go from one to, it's only three, just one to three, but then it'll go to seven, it'll go to eight, it'll go to more and more and more. And again, the infrastructure is not in place to support this at this time. It's like a chicken in an egg thing. Got to do due diligence upfront. Washoe County just changed Lemon Valley flood map and doubled it in size. They built houses, people bought houses, and now they're in a floodplain all of a sudden. Lower property values, increased insurance. And that's because the due diligence hasn't been done upfront. And my last comment is, I read the original 50-page back in December and went through it. And a lot of things are no comments or concerns. But no comments or concerns doesn't mean agreement. It just means no comments.
Thank you. Next is Mercedes Ambrello?
Please forgive me if I stumble. I'm very nervous with public speaking. And I don't mean disrespect if I read this. And do you have the thing where I can show you something from my phone?
Yes, you can put that down on that white spot for the projector.
Right after, my name is Mercedes Ambrello. I'm a military veteran, disabled veteran for PTSD. I purchased a house off of Osage intentionally, meaning I was very intentional about where I was purchasing a home, away from crowds and with very few neighbors and neighbors that I know. And the ability to have animals and to create a place of peace for myself. All three of my acres are in a flood zone except my house. It goes right up to the perimeter of my house right now. After that increases, my house will be in the flood zone. My insurance has planned around my house not being in that flood zone. This new flood zone would put my house inside the flood zone. I bought my house to create a peace in my life. A large part of my home is sub-basement, which I have made into a library with all of my family's books and antique piano and all irreplaceable family heirlooms. Not to mention the fact that once my house would be in the flood zone, it would be next to impossible for me to get insurance for all those things, not just the flood insurance, insurance for my property. On a personal note, I'm Native American from the Osage tribe from Oklahoma. And I bought my house right off of there. I felt like my ancestors sent me there to find peace here in Nevada. I do have the pictures of the flood zone. Tell me where to put it?
Right on that white area.
Right here?
There you go. Yes.
So this is my property. All that blue is flood zone and that's my house. Literally an inch or two of them moving anything, not even the 50 feet. And my house is in the flood zone. All that's my property, that's my house. Any tiny little thing he does and all of my house is, and I have, the majority of my house is a sub-basement. So, so I'm basically gone if he does that. I can't get insurance and all my belongings that I've worked really hard to create a nice peaceful place for myself would be compromised. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Tammy Ruggoe?
Good afternoon. My name's Tammy Ruggoe. I too am a vet and a 34-year resident of the Silver Knolls area. My request today is that you will overturn the planning commission's decision to approve the rezoning of this area on White Hound and Red Rock. The request fails to meet any of the seven key points required, as Mr. Earl has pointed out. The staff notes contain omissions and errors, as already pointed out. Not the least of which is that there are already 9,151 low and ultra-low income homes approved to go out in this area. Nowhere in any of the reports is that discussed. If those homes were built, perhaps there wouldn't be such a large need. And perhaps the Giga Factory and other warehouse workers would have someplace to live. But these plans have been out for many, many years with no attempt to even start them. Also, the staff notes neglect to identify the pending build of the lithium battery factory, as pointed out. As the prior speaker noted, and we can put this on the screen. This was just put out by Washoe County and sent to all the residents. As you can see, they've changed the floodplain and it has moved. My property is here, all of this. And currently, all of the water that comes from this side and down here flows through my property. If this area is developed and raised, or if any of this out here is raised, more water is going to be coming in through our property and draining through all the properties that come through here. Our ditches are already overflowing. We joke that it's white cap and you could get your kayak out there and have a really fun day on the river. That is how much water flows through our neighborhood as it stands now. You start raising this up and congesting it, all of these homes in here will become a higher risk of flooding. As discussed earlier, we're also in a high-risk fire plain and you start condensing homes and we'll have another Southern California. We've had multiple fires since I've lived there. I've evacuated my ranch one time. I've prepared for evacuation twice. There's only one way in and one way out. If we have to wait until 2050 to get any sort of relief on our roads, adding 10,000 more houses is not going to do anything for the current residents except put us at higher risk. We're already losing our fire insurance. Increase that risk and all of us are going to lose our fire insurance. And low and ultra-low income families that they're proposing to move in will not afford it.
Thank you. Malcolm St. Pierre, followed by Trista Gomez?
Hi, I'm Malcolm St. Pierre. I've lived in Silver Knolls 40-plus years now. I've kind of overwhelmed all of speeches and talks, some of good, and they claim all these things. So I'm here on a common sense point of view. Silver Knolls is a very rural area. Only a few people want to live there. They don't want another 500 houses thrown on the road that has trouble being maintained now. Washoe County does not maintain the ditches. They maintain their gravel pit road and everything else all over town. If we get a rare half-inch of rain, like the last lady said, the ditches flood. The county goes out there with some shovels and they call it good. And I live on a private road with four acres, eight of us due. And if you even call the county, they say, well, you're on a private road. I understand that. We have no police, no fire, no sheriff. The only time the sheriff comes out is if I'm in trouble for something and they come and knock on my door. But it's just ridiculous to have people come from out of town, buy 80, 100 acres, whatever they want to do, and then throw it down our throats that lived out there 40 years because they want to make a few extra bucks. And all the fast talk about your engineers approved this, this engineer approved that. Lemon Drive to Red Rock Road shows what engineers do. Pyramid Highway shows what engineers do. How long have they been working on expanding the freeway out to the North Valleys now? Why is there a 40-foot wall going on North Virginia on an off-road? What's that for? So that disclaim all the engineers. If they want to build these projects, build the roads first. Build as a four-lane highway. Clear all the way out. Put your money where your mouth is. Let another road out into the Lemon Valley. Just like I said, there's only one way in and one way out. And as dopey as it sounds, we have a herd of antelope to hang out on that very property that they want to put 500 horses, uh, houses on. One antelope was just killed, I think, last year. You can go down there at the end of summer, early fall and the antelope will come down our road and go down to his place. So to me, I just think common sense needs to come back. If you want to build a subdivision, go to USA Parkway where they have 10, 20,000 workers. No way to get there, so they bash into each other on the freeways. Don't come out to our house. We don't want you, we don't need you. My property taxes are already sky-high, in my opinion. I have, for no fire, no kids, no nothing. And I'm paying almost five grand a year for property taxes. And the county does absolutely nothing for me except maintains their gravel pit road. So I'm kind of out of gas on other things. I had a couple of notes, but I'm not a good speaker. I can't hold a candle to these fast talkers that you've had up here. I'm totally against this project, whichever, I'm for this fellow over here. She's the one that's supporting getting rid of all these guys. I'm on his side. That's my story. Thank you.
Thank you. Trista Gomez, followed by Russ Earl?
Trista Gomez, and I am not a resident of North Valleys, but man, do I just empathize with you. I do. I'm from Spanish Springs and we have been fighting development because we have no roads. We are in traffic, we have fatal accidents, we have flooding every time there's a half an inch of rain. And always, always here is the planning department, the planning department, the engineers approved it, the engineers approved it. So there's cluster housing, there's, there's a high density that we weren't allowed to call high density because it's not called that, but it actually increases the density in all of these places. And the residents in the valleys suffer. I said it last week, I'll say it again today. The residents in the valleys suffer every day, whenever they go to work, anytime they come home or to work, anytime they have a family emergency and need to drive back, they suffer because you do not have the money in your infrastructure budget, you do not have it, I heard it in your budget, to even maintain current infrastructure commitments. I heard it there. And then I also heard that there's, the current commitments are $100 million under budget. They're raising money, they're saving money, and there's other infrastructure budgets that they cannot currently meet. I know that those roads, I know that they are not going to be built. There's not enough money to maintain current infrastructure. And yet, the development-funded commissioners on this board continuously, continuously approve development that the residents oppose. That's not good for anything. They're, all of our insurances in the valleys are going up. We cannot afford anything. I'm in the same boat that these poor folks are in. A lot of the residents are. And you guys continuously approve development that cannot be sustained. You do not have the money currently to sustain it. And the only way you consistently have money is when you get revenue from property taxes, from developers who support you and don't have adequate impact fees, don't have adequate shared, don't have adequate shared costs for community. And you are doing a disservice and you are making residents suffer more. And for what? It's appalling every time I hear about this. You cannot maintain your current systems. And yet, you push and push and push for more and more and more. It's appalling. It's appalling. I feel for these people. And so, let's see. The only way that this can happen, the only way these developers cannot do this is if you don't change the zoning. Because as soon as that zoning is changed, then all they're going to do is do a lawsuit. And the lawsuit is going to be, well, this is zoned this way and so you don't have the right to tell us what's built on our property because it's zoned that way. It's the only recourse that residents have and they should be outraged if you approve this.
Russ Earl, followed by Keith Dayton?
I'll make this as quick as I can. I just wanted to highlight some things that were in error or needed clarification. The prior case that he was talking to with Silver Hills never went to court. I was not the person that appealed that. I was the president of the community organization. We're not an HOA. Different issue. As the applicant even stated, their traffic study looked at their request and one other project, Silver Hills. That accounts for 2,361 dwelling units. There's 9,600. If this gets approved, there'll be 9,600 on that section of Red Rock Road. So they're saying that Red Rock Road can handle it. Well, maybe it can handle Silver Hills and this one, but it certainly can't do 9,600. That traffic study that we handed you shows that. It goes to a level of service of F. It was my interpretation that the planner was not even aware of Silver Star and Evans Ranch at the time they looked at this application. And again, I'm going to highlight, we already have 9,100 units approved. We need 6,840. There is absolutely zero need for them to be asking for this now. If we get to the point where they build all those out, it's the same developer. He can be the one, at that point, when he runs out of space, we can ask for the same thing again. And if they don't want, if they don't want to build that area now, leave it in reserve. When we run out of housing, he can ask for higher density at that time. We do not need it now. Again, as we talked about, the Light and Energy Factory, being a professional firefighter, having residential area on the Lemon Valley side, it will be within 5,000 feet of a sulfur factory. The other issues we have is if they have a fire, the smoke that's emanated from a sulfur could potentially kill you in a couple of breaths. As people, we can try to evacuate. I can't get my horses out of there. It could kill everything I have. We also are in the process of having a wastewater treatment facility built out off of American Flat that will be re-injecting water into the aquifer out there. Truckee Meadows Water has two extraction wells on the airport property at the north end. If we have a hazardous materials issue at that Light and Factory and it contaminates the water supply, it affects everybody. So So to have more people out there and triple the load of, in density, just is not prudent in my eyes. He sugarcoated the hazmat facility. It's great that we get that many jobs, but the current warehouses that are being built, those are speculation. As far as I know, and last time I talked to the project manager over there, there's nobody in them yet. They're building 1.25 million square feet of speculation warehouses. Oh, and the responses by the other agencies, those were boilerplate responses. Yeah, we got it, we looked at it. That wasn't an approval by those agencies, the fire, the health, all that. Yep, we got it. We'll take care of it when there's a further issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Keith Dayton.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. My name is Keith Dayton. My wife and I moved to Silvernose area two and a half years ago. We retired. It was going to be our dream home. It still is. We love the area. We saved for our whole life to live out in a place like this. She can have her horse, I can do my mountain bike riding, I can, it's wonderful. It's a wonderful area. And we're so blessed to live there. But I'm seeing it go downhill. I can't possibly see how the infrastructure is going to handle this. He says it takes eight to 12 minutes for the fire department to get over there. We have firewised our house. We pray very much it doesn't happen. We've seen what happened in California. Not only the fires, but the congestion. Earlier, I've worked in Reno area for 20 years. We saw that Sparks area just explode and turn into nothing. We have one road in and out of here, Red Rock Road. That's it. It's, at times, it's difficult for us to ride our bike or take walks down there. Are you going to put more homes on that road? That's a danger right there. There's so many dangers. We love the night sky. We can hang out. We're so blessed with it. We'll lose that. The worst thing going for us is our trenches and our water issues. We had no idea that existed around here, and if we did, we may have had other considerations. But like I said, we love our home. Three days after moving into our house two years ago, two and a half years ago, our house flooded. And we're told that the ditch in front was not able to accommodate just what we have there now. I brought pictures, and I came into this very same podium and spoke about it and said, "We need help." It took the county nine months to get out there and still did very little, and said, "There's just going to be a one-time cleanup," and that's it. I've been down and dug all the vegetation out of the ditches. They're planning on putting homes in that are nothing but more concrete and roofs. Where's all that water going to go? I'll show you a picture of my home.
Flip it over.
Other side?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. That was...
And turn it again, and again.
Okay. What is, here's the ditch right here. And this is how it floods. Every time it rains, that ditch is almost overflowing. My house is right in back of that. We're going to put more homes in this area? Where's the rest of this water? We live on Bodie Drive, which happens to be, and I did not know this at the time, but it happens to be the low point of this whole valley. That's where it all focuses to, and it's supposed to go out there to our little lake, but it backs up. It cannot possibly get out to that lake in time. I plead with this commissioner.
Thank you. There's nobody else signed in, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I open it back up to the board. Vice Chair Herman, do you have any other comments, questions?
I still support the appeal.
Okay. And Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I read the emails, I watched the planning commission meeting, and I appreciate everybody being here today, so thank you. We have a tough job because we're balancing the rights of a private property owner who wants to develop his land, and we're balancing the rights of property owners who live out there. So I understand it's very challenging for us here at the DIAS. But what kind of grounds me through this process is, is one thing really, is that this is the first pass, the first phase. It really is, there's a lot of work that these folks have to do to get to the next steps, and there's a lot of eyes on them in doing so. And so, as I look at these appeals or when we see these things for the first time, you know, I'm listening to the concerns of the planning commissioners. So, you know, sewer capacity came up. I felt staff did a great job of answering those concerns. Traffic concerns came up. I felt the presentation had enough information and feel comfortable with that. I know it doesn't feel very thorough, but the different agencies that look at this, it's, again, this is the very first pass. So I am able to find all of the required findings at this time, and I know that's not what you want to hear, but I have to go off of the process, and there is a process that we need to follow. So that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Andriola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will echo. Commissioner Garcia, I think it's always difficult when you're in this first phase of the planning in terms of the detail that will follow and the public process that encompasses all, whether it's wildlife, no one brought up wildlife. I spoke with somebody who had concerns about wildlife as well and met with staff about trying to understand if there is any endangered species, for instance, or anything that is another impact that wasn't brought up today. And the fact is, is that even some initial planning that goes through in terms of what you've seen will take even deeper dive in terms of the infrastructure. I really do think that we as a whole need to start thinking about the infrastructure and always looking at development and the catch-up of that infrastructure, and that's the frustration. And so I think we, as policymakers, also need to think about what resources we have to actually help with the infrastructure in terms of not putting it on the taxpayers' back, but having the developer and some of the resources that are available that haven't really been used by Washoe County and used in other jurisdictions. So that the, so for instance, the sewer capacity issues, a lot of those are already being worked out in terms of capacity, not just for this, but for others, other places. And so I think that history of development paying for infrastructure is true. Development does pay for infrastructure, but we can't wait for that infrastructure. So I think you'll hopefully be seeing some things that Washoe County is doing. I know that I'm working really hard on trying to look at those resources that we can really leverage and leverage. And maybe if, as this project goes through, there might be opportunities for that to happen as well. But the reality is, is that what's, what's in front of us is exactly what Commissioner Garcia shared. It's, it's not to approve the project, and the project will take into consideration all the processes and all the Is dotted and Ts crossed, and then more importantly, an opportunity for the public to weigh in and actually see everything. So I know that it's hard, it's very difficult, but it's an important part that I think that we understand that we are growing. I said earlier that I really feel like we need to change the tagline of the biggest little city to the littlest biggest city because we are growing. We're no longer small. And so as hard as that is, that is the reality. I sit on the Planning Governing Board for the region, and the fact is, is that you can't make a claim saying it fits in the master plan if it doesn't legally, for instance, as an example. So to say that it doesn't fit in the master plan is really something that I think must be weighed in terms of facts. And the facts are that the findings can be made, and so I appreciate everyone feeling the way you feel. I think it's, it's hard. It's hard. Change is hard. But it's not just a willy-nilly process, and I think that that's really important to understand. So maybe we can see some of the resources where infrastructure is almost first, if you want to call it that, or in conjunction with, and not have to wait so long and impact everyone. So I hope that we can see that one day come to fruition on the quicker end of things. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So many things go into this type of a development, and a lot of them were brought up today. Sheriff's capacity. We haven't had enough sheriff's deputies out in that part of the world. And as the county grows, I think somebody said it, and I believe it's true, that the sheriff's capacity is not to where it needs to be. Then we've got to look at county fire services out there. So, you know, the county needs to make sure that the fire services are funded. Water, water's a big issue. Sewer's even a bigger issue. You know, the other side of the coin is, we're talking about entry-level buyers, and there's a severe housing shortage in our, in our county, in our state. So there's so many, so many facets to this, and with the Washoe County Planning Commission approved it, I know it was a three-to-two vote, that's what I'm hearing, and, you know, a lot of times, things happen around here on a three-to-two vote. But, you know, again, I'm going to go back and look at the entry-level buyers. We need housing in this, this community, and so there's a lot to weigh here. But just my thoughts, I hear what everyone's saying, and believe me, I live in a rural lifestyle, so I'm very cognizant of that. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also can meet all the findings. This is one of many steps. I know this is frustrating. And I'm, I know that there's going to be a lift for this developer moving forward with all of the constraints that the community outlined, but we have a legal requirement, this body, to make sure that we follow state law when we're looking at how to approve developments. And if we don't, then we put the county in a bigger legal issue. And so we want to work with you. We want to make sure that as we grow, we're doing it sustainably. This commission is committed to that, and we all sit on regional boards to make sure that we can serve this community, but we understand that your frustration. So I would, we've taken public comment, and I am going to move to deny Russ Earl's appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's decision as outlined in the staff report. That's the motion.
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. We have a motion and a second. Any questions from the board on that?
May I make a follow-up comment?
Yes.
Please. I do think it's important to look at the dark sky. I've spoken with staff, and I'm really encouraged that we can move forward with actually fine-tuning that policy. This, I think, is a great project to look at that, so I do hope that there's an opportunity to discuss that at a later date.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
And that motion passes four to one with Vice Chair Herman in the negative. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll now move into item 24. You can do public comment at the end, ma'am. We're continuing on with this board agenda. Thank you. We'll now move into item 24. Manager Brown.
Item... Item 24 is a public hearing appeal of the Washoe County Planning Commission's denial of regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA 24-0004, which seeks to amend the North Valley's regulatory zone map to change the regulatory zone in three parcels totaling 47.15 acres from low-density suburban to medium-density suburban, and to change the regulatory zone on a 2.08-acre portion of Osage Road from public semi-private, public facilities to MDS. The applicant of the regulatory zone amendment, property owner and appellant, is Lifestyle Homes TND LLC. The addresses of the subject parcels are 10-600, 10-100, and 10-101, Osage Road in Reno. The assessed parcel numbers are 086-350-37, 086-370-09, 086-370-18, and 086-370-10. The Board of County Commissioners shall consider the appeal based on the record and any testimonial and material submitted at the public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners may affirm or reverse the Planning Commission decision. If the Board reverses the Planning Commission decision, it may adopt the requested regulatory zone amendment. If adopted, the Board shall authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect.
Thank you very much. I think we would like a staff presentation on this item.
So the appeal before you today is for regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA 24-0004 on Osage Road. So on December 3rd, 2024, the Planning Commission heard the regulatory zone amendment and unanimously denied the regulatory zone amendment. Therefore, or subsequently, the applicant for that regulatory zone amendment submitted an appeal, and the applicant for that regulatory zone amendment is Lifestyle Homes TND LLC. And the reasons alleged by the appellant for the appeal is that the findings, all of the regulatory zone amendment findings, can be made. So the subject parcels are total approximately 49.23 acres, and 2.08 acres of the 49.23 acres includes a portion of Osage Road. The parcels to the north of the subject properties are developed with single-family dwellings. To the east are developed with industrial buildings and multifamily dwellings. To the south are industrial buildings, a lake, and undeveloped land. And to the west are parcels developed with single-family dwellings as well. The property is located within the North Valley's planning area, and as a result of the proposed regulatory zone amendment, the property would go from low-density suburban zoning with a public slash semi-public facility zoning to medium-density suburban with public slash semi-public facility zoning as well. And approximately 26 acres is within the Zone AE special flood hazard area on the subject properties. So the request before you is for a regulatory zone amendment, as mentioned earlier. It does total 49.23 acres with all of the parcels and the roadway. Breaking that out, there's three parcels totaling 47.15 acres, and then that 2.08-acre portion of Osage Road. And so the zoning would be going from LDS and PSP to MDS and PSP. So as a result of the density, potential density change, it would go from 41 units allowed to 131 units allowed. And as mentioned with the previous presentation, is that this is just changing the zoning itself. This is not creating a subdivision. That would be a completely, a completely separate process with public hearings and a deeper dive into the actual project itself and the proposed parcels in that subdivision. So on the screen is a zoning map showing the existing and the proposed zoning. So you can see the area on the right side of that screen. That pinkish color there is that proposed MDS zoning, and the remaining blue portions is the PSP zoning. So as mentioned earlier, the property is located within, or a portion of the property is located within the FEMA Zone AE special flood hazard area. That is the 100-year floodplain, and it is in the southern portion of the subject parcels. Engineering was provided the project information for review, and they stated that during the review process, that further review for the floodplain could be addressed and mitigated at the time that a development application comes through, such as a tentative map for a subdivision. So the proposed project was sent to multiple agencies for review, one of them being engineering. And as mentioned on the previous slide, they reviewed the floodplain information and stated that those, the floodplain and things like that could be addressed at the time of future development applications, as well as traffic and roadways could also be addressed in the future with a future development application for a subdivision. So the proposed properties would be served by Envy Energy for Power. for a subdivision. So, the proposed properties would be served by NV Energy for Power. And the project information was sent to Truckee Meadows Water Authority for review, and they provided comments stating that the project would need to be annexed into Tomah's retail service area and obtain available water rights through Tomah. The project information was also sent to the city of Reno, and comment was provided stating that sewer service could be provided by the Reno-Stead wastewater treatment facility, and there is current remaining capacity to serve the proposed project, and that that facility is being expanded as well. And the project information was sent to Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, and there is within five miles or so of the subject properties, two fire stations, and the response time per the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, depending upon road conditions, would be between six and eight minutes. And so, the Planning Commission was not able to make the findings, and those findings there are shown on the screen. And so, the Board may take one of the following actions. Grant Lifestyle Homes TND LLC's appeal and reverse the Planning Commission's decision. Or two, deny Lifestyle Homes TND LLC's appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's decision. And I am available for questions, and the appellant has a presentation as well.
Thank you very much. And per our requirements, we'll have the appellant come up and give them 10 minutes to present their case.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commission, once again, Garrett Gordon for the record, representing Lifestyle Homes. Here today is the applicant and requesting that you overturn the Planning Commission denial. This presentation is a little redundant from the last one in regards to the findings, but I need to make sure we have a clear record. So, this project site is different than what you just heard. You can see here, it is surrounded to the east by the city of Reno. It sits right on the boundary of city limits. You can see to the east, there are apartments, there are manufacturing facilities, there is industrial. It is a thriving part of the city of Reno. I thought staff did an excellent job in their staff report to call this a great transition area, right? In blue, the project site would be a transition. It'd be a transition from those hard, more intense industrial multifamily uses, go to three units per acre, and eventually transition into one unit per acre. Again, the request is from one unit per acre to three, resulting in about 131 units. And again, like I mentioned before, the master plan certainly allows this zoning category. And again, MDS is three units per acre. We're currently at one. And the master plan, in fact, in this area, does also allow for the high-density suburban, which is seven units per acre, which I may argue that is also a transition from industrial to one unit per acre. But, we did not ask for that today whatsoever. We're asking for a middle ground of the medium-density suburban. Traffic, again, you heard last presentation, same here. The proposed project will operate within levels of service. I anticipated to operate within policy levels of service, and that regional road improvements on Red Rock will be adequate. Let me stress again that fourth bullet point, that when and if a tentative map comes before you, we know the Commissioner Ann Realist's point, that we're going to have some tough questions about infrastructure, and making sure that the infrastructure is, in fact, in place, ready to go with the capacity at the time of tentative map. So, we're prepared to answer those questions then, work with engineering and our traffic engineer on that traffic impact study when we do move forward with the tentative map. So, the Planning Commission, I would argue, I think many of you may have watched the hearing, really focused on the flooding concern. And so, we hit that hard in our appeal letter, as well as we hired a, and she describes herself as a civil engineer specializing in flood and water rights with experience in the North Valley. So, this is her wheelhouse, and she's certainly here to answer any questions. Let me first say, there's no legal requirement or legal prohibition to change zoning in a flood zone, right? It's not as if there's a checklist, and you're in a flood zone. If you check that, I wouldn't be here, right? You can certainly develop in a flood zone. I thought that your own county engineer did a great job at the Planning Commission when she stood up, and she said, actually, developments like this make the situation better. And why is that? Because with the wisdom of this body and the county, it's no longer one-to-one flood mitigation. It's one-to-1.3. So, it has to be 130% current conditions. So, in other words, in the event we bring back a tentative map before you, we have to show, from an engineering standpoint, legal standpoint, that it's not just one-to-one as far as existing flows on the property and post-development flows. It has to be 130% better. So, the flooding situation would get better in the event of this development. And you heard that from your own engineering staff at Planning Commission, and I submit to you, from a professional civil engineer who stamps plans all the time, in her words, "It is my professional opinion that a development following county regulations will improve drainage conditions, not worse than them. The construction of new stormwater control infrastructure by the private developer would reduce the risk of flooding in the neighborhood. Therefore, the findings required for this proposed zone change will be satisfied." And going above the first paragraph, which talks about, "There are multiple methods that have been approved by Washoe County engineers, and the best method will be determined during the engineering design process." So, in other words, we're substantiating, obviously, what your county engineer said. We have our own expert who says, "At the time of engineering with the tentative map, we will pick one of the methods approved by this body, that we have to go to 130% as required by code. We will be required to improve drainage conditions, reduce the flooding in the neighborhood, rather than sitting there vacant today and for a long period of time, and that the findings today can certainly be met with regards to flooding." So, I'll kind of rush through the rest of my presentation for findings, but I just wanted to hit this very hard, because this really was the concern of the Planning Commission. And I think, from a legal perspective, from an engineering perspective, from our experts, to your in-house experts, everyone's comfortable with this zone request, but knowing we have to roll up our sleeves and do some work at the time of tentative map. Consistent with the master plan, I'll just hit some highlights, as I have about five minutes left. So, certainly, I put some more bullet points here, just to kind of stress the point, that this is from your own master plan. A renewed focus on infill, redevelopment, and efficient use of land is necessary to minimize suburban sprawl. I would argue, all day long, this is an infill project. We're next to city limits. We have one unit per acre to the west of us. We're right in the middle for a modest three units per acre. It also says, "An increased diversity of housing types is necessary to support this expected population profile." Again, we don't need to continue to go one unit per acre, folks, new home buyers, entry-level home buyers, one of a variety of housing types, that is lifestyles niche. As I jump down, your master plan encourages compatible smart growth development while allowing density in a lifestyle that's manifested by a variety of lot sizes. Density, we certainly accomplish that. Compatibility, this was right from the staff report, where the staff talks about the location of the subject parcels is essentially in a transition area, as the parcels are between the residential uses within Washoe County's district to north and west, and the industrial and multifamily uses to the city of Reno to the east and south. And obviously, the infrastructure is there with Osage and connecting to Moya, connecting up to the Sted Airport. So, this is a great infill project with, in staff's own words, excuse me, is a great, is a great transition. And I would argue, I also like their terminology, a gradual increase in residential density. We're not trying to plop in an apartment project here, or seven units per acre, but three, which I would argue is gradual. Again, compatibility, this project, just sorry to be redundant, but I would say, went to health, went to fire, went to the sheriff's office, went to engineering. No concerns, no objections. They all told the city, they all told the Planning Commission on the record that we meet and comply all required legal findings today, and we'll certainly have to do that again at tentative map. Change conditions, I focused on this last presentation, but there is an increase, a requirement or an amendment to increase the availability of housing in the area by the county master plan and the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. MDS would help add to, 140 units would help add to that 680, 6,840 units that are required. And I would say, as far as what gets developed first, this is probably it, because it's right there next to the airport, right there next to the infrastructure. And I think it's a great infill project for the county. Again, change conditions, I talked about the Reno Air Logistics, Dermani Properties. They are building buildings. They do have tenants. I think they're excited about the opportunity to have some residential in the area. Obviously, Red Rock is fantastic, but also this is right next door. You can see the same map that really shows our property right there, kind of to the lower left-hand corner of that red, of that green box from Reno Air Logistics Park. This project, 140 units, are right in the center of all of that that's happening. And certainly, it would be a great opportunity for some entry-level housing for the employees. And again, there's commercial, there's industrial, there's office park, there's retail, but there's no housing, and this would be literally next door to this project. And again, as I mentioned before, there are over a million square feet is currently underway. More is coming. Housing is certainly needed. Again, change conditions, we talked about some infrastructure. There's infrastructure that has happened, that is happening. Moya Boulevard, which connects right into the airport, will get widened by 2027, and this project certainly would feed off of that as far as access. So, this infill project certainly is consistent and concurrent with the transportation network that's under construction. Availability facilities, sewer, you heard on the record by staff, there's over 1,000 residential units available. We know when we come back with the tentative map, that that absolutely, that capacity will have to be there as well. But, for today, it's there. We anticipate it will be there in the future. If it's not, I have a problem with the tentative map, but we do think it'll be before you and to meet that finding. It does today, and it will, we think, in the future. And staff, again, adamantly says, "This is not impacting implementation of any programs or master plan policies or analysis." And again, desired pattern of growth, this is it. City limits, employment center, a modest transition area for the density. And I'd finally end with, 1,000 employees are coming. This is the perfect area to provide some housing for those employees. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll have commission discussion, then we'll open public comment and discuss again and make some action. So, Vice Chair Herman.
We have public comment first.
Okay, you want to do public comment? All right. Madam Clerk, can you help us with public comment?
Certainly. First up, we have Linda Fogadaz, followed by Howard Owens.
Hi. My name is Linda Fogadaz. I've lived in Silver Knolls for 29 years, on the corner of Osage and Wagon Ho. We moved out there for rural life. This project, which they're showing 131 possible homes now, I had originally, 126 is what I had heard, will be a significant impact. I have heard only talks about Moya from, from Red Rock to around Moya, the road widening and such. They have to get to their homes, and that's Osage Road. Right now, Osage is almost a mile long. We have 25 homes, we have 23 homes built on that road, and a few that are now being built. There will not be more than 27 if every owner builds a home on their property. They want to put more than five times that amount at the end of this one-mile street. It will, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, on average, housing units, if you have 126 housing units, you could minimally increase vehicle trips by 668 daily trips on a one-mile stretch. That will impact the homes that are there right now immensely. It will be a freeway. I can't imagine what it, what it will do. It will seriously impact safety. When they come in and they pave that road, it will become a Moya Drive, where they will be speeding. Plata Mesa already has that problem. The residents complain about the speed that people drive down that road. It's 35 miles an hour, and people are going 60. And that's what our street will become as well. People will not be able to let their kids go out and ride their bikes, walk their dogs, ride their horses anymore. The flooding, in 29 years, my husband and I have watched the dry Silver Lake fill in 24 to 48 hours. The city of Reno has built up warehouses, and the last one, within 24 hours, it flooded back into people's houses.
Howard Owens, I'm off of Red Rock on Placerville. My comments will probably be somewhat redundant, too. Page 54 of the original report says, "The property owners of Silver Hills rezoning, support rezoning of the subject properties," and that's simply not true. If this meeting wasn't today during working hours, there would be a lot more people here. But, people can't come because they have to go to work to earn a living. And so, it's simply not true. Some other things that we need to talk about, Orange County, going back to the battery. Orange County, California, just enacted a moratorium on new battery facilities, including unincorporated rural areas of the county to protect the self, the health, safety, and welfare of its residents. And we're putting a toxic gas battery in the middle of a residential area, which is going to be even bigger residential area, since all this other stuff is getting approved. Environment, the environment impact only addressed sage plants. That was it, if you read the report. Didn't say anything about animals, didn't say anything about endangered species or anything. You got butterflies, you got, there's a toad in the Reno area that's on the endangered list, and I have a waterfall on my property, and it's full of toads, bigger than both my fists together. And I don't know what kind of toads they are, if they're endangered or not, but it never got looked at. So, the butterflies, there's an article about butterflies. There's a rare butterfly in the Reno area. It could be out there in Silver Knolls. It never got studied. School impacts, right now, school kids have to sit on the floor of the school bus, because there's not enough seats for them to sit in the seats. And we're going to add probably average two people, two school kids per residence. And if you're talking 1,000, that would be an additional 2,000 kids. You're talking 12,000, that would be an additional 24,000 kids. And also, firearms are legal right now in Silver Knolls. I hear people shooting all the time. You're going to have to address that, because once you pull the trigger, you have no, the bullet's going to go until it hits something to stop it. The request to change to the new zoning is a departure from the historical development projects. It also said, "There's no military installations within the required noticing area. National Guard at Sted Airport, I believe, is a military installation, and we don't have any impact from them." And so, that's all I'm saying.
I wish that we were open to more participation in that.
Tammy Rojo, followed by Russ Earl.
Thank you. For the record, I'm just going to put this floodplain map up for everyone to just be able to absorb exactly what's going to happen to all the homes along this whole area when this comes in. More building does not improve your floodplain. Do we need to go back and revisit Sun Valley? Have we seen what happens when we wait? We approve this development, and we wait to see what happens afterwards? You say that the county can't absorb the legal... and we wait to see what happens afterwards? You say that the county can't absorb the legal fees that'll be incurred by a lawsuit from developers? How about another Sun Valley? From the taxpayer perspective, we are paying for the bad decisions. So let's stop, because that's exactly what's going to happen here. It's going to backflow and affect all of these families and all of these properties. Currently, there are no multifamily homes over on this east side, as was pointed out. That's all warehouses. So unless they're housing multifamily, multifamilies inside those empty warehouses, there are no multifamily homes just on the east side. You have to go into Sted. And what they're also not bringing up is all the building that's going on in Sted, Military Drive and Lemon. They're also failing to acknowledge, once again, 9,150 homes that have already been approved. If you want to have a test, test on those that have already been approved. See how the road works out. See how the water works out. See how the sewer works out. But do it on stuff that's already been approved and stop disrupting existing residences and putting our lives and welfare in jeopardy. I can talk louder in the microphone.
I'm sorry about that. It looks like all of our microphones. Continue on.
There you go. Maybe you can give me back that five seconds.
Yes, ma'am. We can stop the timer and get that microphone.
I will tell you from personal experience, and while the fire and police will say that they have a desired response of six to eight minutes, when we had a serious fire, a dwelling fire on our property, it was over 20 minutes. And that was at 4:20 in the morning when there was no traffic. Neighbors have waited over 45 minutes for an ambulance to respond, and almost an hour to get them to the local emergency room because of traffic. That golden hour is the one that saves lives. By continuing to approve all of this overdevelopment, you are putting residents' lives at risk, and you are showing a complete disregard for the residents who have lived here, paid taxes for many, many years. So, hold the developers accountable. Make them step forward and finish what they already started, and test your roads and your water and your sewer and your law enforcement in places that they have already invaded, and leave us alone. Thank you.
Russ Earl, followed by Jan Bishop.
Sorry, you're probably very tired of hearing from me today already. Uh, Russ Earl again, and I want to look at this number three for your findings. And you said, no problem on the last issue, we can meet all findings. And that's response to changing conditions, more desirable use. Well, I want to point out again, and it's been harped on and harped on and harped on. One, Planning Commission said no about this one, and so did Planning Department. But we look at the other one, and last time around on Silver Hills, we had the same, but it was still approved. But either way, on this, the response to changing conditions, this same developer, the same person that's asking for this increase in density, already has approval for 9,100-plus dwelling units, but they want more and more and more. We don't need more. We needed 6,840 in the next 17 years. They haven't moved one shovel yet to move, move forward with what they already have approved, but they want to keep these floodgates moving forward to keep asking for more and more higher-density zoning, so they can keep jamming more housing eventually in an area that would already be taken care of if they would just go forward with what they've already been approved. So, no, their response for changing conditions cannot be met, because they already have the approval to take care of those changing conditions. Adding more to it isn't going to do anything. They keep talking about, oh, there's 1,100 connections out at this Sted Treatment Facility. Well, if I had $2 in my checking account, I could wrote, write 40 checks, but at some point, you're going to overdraw that account. And there's plenty of building that's going on, as Tammy noted, in Sted and Lemon Drive, and that's going to start to eat away at those 1,100. If they would ever build part of their 9,100 approved, those would eat away at those 1,100. And then we're not going to have any ability, and then something else will have to be done. But let's work with what's already approved out there. It just makes no sense to keep compounding the problems that we already have. And as Tammy was saying, she was a nurse previously. I'm a firefighter. We both have medical, we have emergency service response. I fell a week and a half ago on the ice. I laid there for about 18 minutes before I got an ambulance and a fire truck. And that was at nine in the morning. It took me 45 minutes to get to the ER from Red Rock down to, uh, the VA hospital. That's unacceptable. I mean, and we're just going to keep compounding those issues by keeping, and, and they talk about other issues with the water. They want to raise the level. Well, as far as I know, gravity still works in the down direction. If they're going to say they're going to hold 1.3 factor on their water, well, where are they going to keep it? And if that breaches, if they have it up at a higher level, it's going to put everybody downstream of that at a severe risk. Again, I think it brings the county into a liability issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Bishop, followed by Mercedes Ambrello.
Hi, Jan Bishop. Thank you for your time, and I thank Russ for that segue. I'm going to go to the other side of the water issue. There is water out there that floods, but there's also a need for drinking water. There's a need for water to hook up to each of those houses. With the, uh, advanced water purification facility coming in, I was able to put in three questions and get them in their, um, EPA, um, assessment, that, one, if you're going to take this water and clean it, you're going to put it into our aquifer to store it. Will that change our aquifer? For yes, for good or for negative? Can it release arsenic? Number two, will it swell the ground out there? The answer was yes. It will stay there, they think, for a long time, then they will pull it out. This is Tama. Now it belongs to Tama. Whatever they put in, they can pull out, they can sell that. And I know that not just us, but the, I know the developer, any development out there needs water. But it's going to take time to see if that test works. That's great science going on, but it's going to take time to, to look at what works and what doesn't work with that. So, um, I know that, um, lifestyle homes needs water. They're gathering it from different sources, from Vidler, from looking at, working with Tama that way. We still have to make sure our aquifer that serves our wells is still going to be able to be sustained, so that it doesn't damage who's already there. I just think this takes time, and I think sometimes when you, you keep building and building, and then you have houses out there, and then you have problems with the water for drinking, for washing, then you've created a whole bunch more problems. I just think there's things that are going on right now that might work for you in the infrastructure later, but they take time, and we need to give that time to look before we say, yeah, go ahead. Oh, now we have the houses, now we have problems. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mercedes Ambrello.
My request is the commission reject the appeal of case, uh, D RZA 24-0004, Osage Road. Um, when I spoke prior, I thought I was speaking about Osage. I live on Wagon Ho off of Osage. So, all the pictures I showed you were about this project. Um, sorry for the confusion. Um, but they, uh, we request that they keep in line with their master plan values, and their plans are not in line with their values. Um, the master plan talks about community vision for Silver Knolls rural lifestyle, and that maintaining a rural character due to the lifestyles of residents of these should be supported. As they said, we have horses, we have dogs, we have animals. We can shoot on our property because we do have coyotes. Um, so that would all be gone if they changed the density. Um, I also wanted to say a little something. I was listening to the gentleman speak, um, saying that the floodplain for their area would actually improve with their, um, plans. It would improve because the mitigation for it would spread it out to the neighbors, meaning theirs would improve on their parcels, because they would spread their water out to the neighbors. And again, this is how close my house is to being underwater, right here. That's my house. That's the floodplain. Any type of mitigation that they put in buries my house and my sub-basement, which is the majority of my house. So, any of their mitigation, taking care of themselves and their parcels, spreads out to the neighbors, um, and the surrounding areas. And, um, any impact to our aquifers, I just had my water tested, um, and it's good. And I don't have to spend $30,000 right now for a filtration system, because my water's good. But anything they put in may or may not be good, and then they're going to take it out, and then I may have to dig a deeper well. We're talking tens of thousands of dollars for each resident that they're going to cost us by messing with our aquifers, or putting in bad water into our aquifers and polluting them. So, and, uh, that's it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
That's everybody in chambers who signed in, but I do have a couple of emails to place on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, back to you, Vice Chair Herman.
Heartbreaking. It's just like 10 years of heartbreak. Um, this, this is not true. This is going on and on and on. Um, I wish there was more responsibility in development. I was promised a lot of things when I first became a commissioner, but it hasn't worked out well for your, your communities. District Five has got hit, hit pretty hard. We've got a lot of people that have been under, underwater. It's the cost of development that isn't responsible. We could be responsible. We could have planned better, done the infrastructure first, but we didn't. Heartbreak. It's just, it's just really heartbreaking when we continue on the same path. It doesn't change. It goes on and on. I'm sorry, but I would have to make a motion to affirm the denial because that's supportive of my district. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, um, during the meeting, uh, that I watched on, for the Planning Commission, I was kind of taken off guard by, um, kind of the pendulum swing from the previous agenda item to this one. And I was trying to tally up the, the reasons why they couldn't find the findings, and it seems really scattered. And so, I can't see, is it Tim? Tim's hiding behind the podium. Um, I feel like the, from the, watching the video, it wasn't really clear, um, or much justification. It seemed like FEMA floodwater map was brought up, and then, then the findings just started ticking away, and there wasn't a whole lot of justification. Were, were there things said in the meeting that maybe wasn't projected on the video that we need to know about what occurred during that meeting? It just felt very disjointed.
Tim Evans, Planner. So, as far as the reasoning, the, the real thing that, um, I could see just from being in the meeting and watching a few times and things like that, is that the Planning Commission really hung their hat on the floodplain issue, and beyond that, there wasn't anything else that I can conclude that led them to that, that decision.
Okay, if, if that was the main reason, um, what would have been the finding that they should have not approved? Because it was all over the board. Um, but if you tie it back to the findings, if it was that big of a concern, what was the finding that they would have honed on, honed in on?
Just one moment, let me bring up the...
And while you're looking that up, I'll, I'll address the Sun Valley issue, and I appreciate you bringing that up as an example. But Sun Valley was an unplanned community, and it was small tract act of 1938, and it was, uh, public lands that were deemed unsuitable for agriculture, homesteading and commercial use. And basically, the BLM didn't want it and knew that there wouldn't be any services out there, and the county couldn't take on adding the infrastructure and services. And so, those parcels were disposed of, basically. And so, I wrestle with infrastructure every single day in District Three, particularly in Sun Valley. So I hear you loud and clear on the need of that, but that community has a much different history. Um, but back to the FEMA flood zone.
I misspoke on that, ma'am. I mean, Lemon Drive.
Okay. Thank you. And Tim, I mean, and maybe you don't have to answer that question. What I'm struggling with, if there really was a, a major concern with the planning commissioners having issues with the FEMA flood, floodplain, I felt like the, um, the applicant addressed that pretty loud and clear today in his slides. And I, we're all very hypersensitive to floods, to fires, to these natural disasters. This is not something we take lightly. I just had a really difficult time trying to understand and tease out why the planning commissioners couldn't find the findings.
Tim Evans, Planner. So as far as that goes, just to give some additional background, which I'm sure you saw in the Planning Commission staff report, staff did recommend approval of the project.
Yeah.
And based on all the evidence that was provided, you know, during, during agency review and all the research that I had done, that I concluded that the findings could be made. So...
All right, that's, thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Andrea?
Thank you. Uh, I won't, uh, repeat what Commissioner Garcia basically said, but I watched the same, um, in terms of just a little all over the place. Flood was the main focus, and I think that, um, it was clear in terms of even wrestling with that. There was, um, a lot of wrestling in terms of, uh, particular commissioners. Um, and so it was a little all over the place. So I appreciate the question, Commissioner Garcia. I appreciate the answer. I also appreciate that, um, we saw in the presentation, the, um, hiring of an independent, um, engineer, if you will, I can't remember if that's her title, but who specialized specifically in flood, um, that actually looked at that independently. And, and then I think we need to go back to the original points that were made, um, previously in terms of this is just the beginning of a very, very extensive process that includes not only public comment, but includes addressing everything, whether it be flood and more, including the butterflies, including wildlife. And, um, I, uh, am going to, uh, support the, um, granting lifestyle homes, um, the reversal of the Planning Commission based on the fact that there is going to be absolute assurance that, um, everything will go through a very, very stringent process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. I've got, um, the same concerns about flooding. Uh, I heard the presenter talk about, uh, engineering, and, uh, and I want to hear more about that, and, uh, and not maybe at this meeting, but more about that if, if this moves forward and, uh, see what, what type of, uh, proposals they have to, to mitigate the flooding with, with their engineering or holding tanks or holding ponds or whatever it might be. I'm, I'm just not sure how they, how they're going to do that, but, uh, I'd like to know that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And, um, I also can make the findings. I think, um, if there's no other comments from commissioners, I'm happy to make the motion. Okay. Um, I move to grant lifestyle homes, TND LLC's appeal and reverse the Planning Commission's decision to deny regulatory zone amendment case as outlined in the staff report.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would you, um, amend that or to make, on the basis that you can make all findings?
Yes.
And authorize, um, you authorize the chair to sign?
Yes, and, and yes, I can make all findings. Thank you, DA Kanderas. Um, with that modification of the motion, looking for a second.
A second.
Okay. Uh, I'll take Commissioner Garcia. We have a motion and a second. Any questions from the board on that? We've taken public comment. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
And that motion passes four to one with Vice Chair Herman in the negative. Thank you, everyone, for your time. We'll now move in to... You, did you want to speak on that last item during? Okay. Well, we have public comment. We're... I'm about to bring that up. Okay. We will now move into item 25, which is our public comment. Manager Brown?
Item 25 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole, and virtual public comment may be taken when facilities are available.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Trista Gomez.
Miserable, miserable. Every time I come here, it's kind of miserable. Thank you, Commissioner Herman, because that's how residents feel every single time you guys approve development that you can't support, that's unplanned, and that you don't have development, that you don't have infrastructure for. Miserable, heartbreaking. A complete change in the way of life that most residents came here for, or why they are here, or why they stayed. The reason I ask for my comments to be taken verbatim is because I would like the spirit of my comments to remain consistent in the record, and I kind of don't feel like they are. So I would like that to be addressed to some degree. As far as the voting presentation, the one concern I've heard from constituents or people -- because I don't know a lot about the vote, but what they are concerned about is the issue of that you can't audit, that there's no way for residents to audit inside the internal votes of those machines. And so I know they're going to paper ballots, but my question is, is Dominion still going to be used? I have another question. This is specifically about APN 534-561-04. It's regarding the Village Green grading that is going to go near the, for another warehouse out in Pyramid Highway, that I'm sure will get approved based on your votes. That has the same concern, right? We don't have ditch capacity inside of Pyramid to contain the water that comes. It's not a 10-year flood. It's not a 100-year flood. It's every time it rains, with any kind of significance, the ditch cannot handle, the ditches along those roads cannot handle the floods. It's unfortunate that there's such a lack of consideration for residents. And during the budget presentation, two different categories for buyers. There was a local and an out-of-state categories. And you had more of a lament that you couldn't raise property taxes, which would further inhibit local buyers from buying houses, than the fact that you guys went over budget, $100 million. You guys are so far under over budget. And you don't lament the fact that you went over budget. You lament the fact that you can't raise taxes higher, and that you don't consider the fact that that is a huge, huge issue for residents who continue to not be able to buy a home. These homes that they're going to build, they're still going to be high property taxes, high property taxes, probably in the $5,000 to $7,000, which is going to prohibit local buyers from buying those homes. Because all of your revenue is based on that, and you don't have the infrastructure that you need without that revenue. It's sad. The way that you guys are treating residents is sad. It's unfortunate. It's appalling. I hope something changes. It hasn't changed yet. It's just gotten worse.
Lynda Tomcik.
Hi, my name is Lynda Tomcik. We live on Osage Road. As you go down Red Rock and turn right on Osage, that 19 acres on the left-hand side is ours. Right now, the traffic is horrendous, and they're talking about putting all those houses in. It's a gravel road. They come flying down there already. I can't keep the dust out of my house because of the problem we have already. And what is our property value going to be? 19 acres? I mean, if they're putting that many houses on that small of lots, why can't we do it then? I mean, not that we want to. We want to keep our land, but that's kind of the gist of it? Because all these people have property. It's not like we're living on a 2x4 plotted land. They've been out there for decades. They built their house. They built their families. It's a small amount of parcel. Why can't you take and let them go out to Cold Springs and make their plan out there where there's open land? Why do you have to take this small community, which isn't that big, and force us to leave our houses and our property and what we've built, because you guys want to build those amount of houses at the end of our road? Why can't you find another plot for them where it would be more usable to put those houses? Instead of right down the street from where we live? I've been out there 14 years. My husband's been out there 25. That's a lot of time to be in your house and then have it uprooted right underneath you. The art property values have gone down because of all this stuff that's gone out there already. We moved out there, like everybody said, for the peace and quiet, to have our families. We have three dogs and three cats. We can't let them run out around there right now with just the traffic we have. We're going to have, from that end, nothing but traffic, 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 like the other gal said, 400%, 600% change in the amount of cars we have coming in there now. They come down there, the gravel goes all over the place, the dust. And the same thing with the flooding. We're always concerned about, even though we're a little far away, the flooding, because if they're going to flood, what's going to keep them from bringing it to our end of the town? I mean, I just think it's ridiculous that you can't find something more decent to put all these houses instead of taking over that small amount of land that's been there for ages, ages, and people have their, you know, their homes that they've lived in forever to take it away. And that's what you're doing, is taking that away.
That's everybody in chambers who signed in, but I have added an email to the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move on to item 26. Manager Brown?
Item 26 is commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything for us, Manager Brown?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Vice Chair Herman? Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Andriola?
I have a question about the ducks. These ducks are everywhere in this building. I badge myself in from the garage, and I badge it, I see a duck. And now I see another duck. Is there a memo about the ducks? I don't know who's ever doing ducks, but it's cute. So I thought maybe we could end on a very duck moment. I just, I don't know who's doing this duck thing, but thanks for making it loose, a moment of smile when I come into the building, and now a little bit of a smile during a very difficult meeting to see a duck on the Kleenex box, or the tissue box. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark.
Nothing.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. We are adjourned.